Thirty seconds. Twenty. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning, sir. We are ready to start the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Nicole. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, February first, uh, meeting of the Cedric County Commission. Uh, we have a number of people here to join us this morning, so welcome, everybody. We will have a slight agenda, uh, if you're all paying attention or watching at home. After item L on new business, we will have an off-agenda item that should be fairly brief. And the other, uh, item would be, we do have an executive session at the end of the, of the meeting today, and we do not have a fire agenda, so they're just some housekeeping notes. So, um, with that, um, we'll call the meeting to order, and Nicole, you got anything for us?
You're good.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Invocation to be led by Pastor Ron Proct. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning, Pastor. Welcome to the meeting. Thank you for being here.
Father, this morning, we come before you on behalf of the Board of Commissioners as they carry out their responsibilities, providing services needed by the people of our county. We ask for wisdom as they make decisions that will touch the lives of every citizen of this county, direct their thoughts and comments to the greater good of the people they are elected to serve. Father, we live in a time of great political, religious, and social differences that are often the source of anger and frustration among the citizens of our county, state, and nation. We ask you to speak peace into your world and teach us to treat one another as people who carry the Amago Day, the image of our Creator, to treat one another as fellow citizens of our community. Teach us, Father, to respond with respect and dignity toward those with whom we disagree. Help our commissioners model that character in their reaction and responses to one another and to the citizens who speak to them today. We pray, Father, for unity, even in the diversity of opinions held by the commissioners and those who will address them this morning. With today being the first day of Black History Month, help us to celebrate the accomplishments and achievements of African-Americans who have impacted not only our nation but the world with the gifts you have given them. Help us to learn to treat one another with respect and dignity, regardless of the color of our skin, the languages we speak, or the places where we were born. Teach us how to live in harmony and respect with one another. This morning, Father, we pray for those who are the most vulnerable in our community, the elderly, the poor, the homeless, as they deal with the cold weather and the higher costs they face with energy and food costs. We pray that you would protect them and keep them safe. We hold up the first responders who serve our community, police, firefighters, EMS, who rush into danger as we run away from it. We pray for their safety physically and for their families as they send them off to work every day with no guarantees of their safe return at night. Father, this morning, we're reminded of the strife and difficulty of the people in Ukraine as they continue to deal with the horrific attacks on their nation. Give their leaders wisdom as they respond to those attacks, and give international leaders wisdom as they consider how to help the Ukrainians in their struggle. We pray for those who are the most affected by these attacks, women, children, and the elderly. Show us how to serve them in these difficult days. Father, we pray these things in the name of the One who created all things, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Okay. Thank you, Pastor, again, for being here, and appreciate your good words. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
We note that Commissioner Lopez is, uh, calling in. Uh, she's still, uh, um, in the middle of, uh, her new babies that have been born, so, uh, Sarah, if you're on, uh, we just doing roll call. Okay, go ahead, please, Madam Clerk.
Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present, and I think you could recall, uh, Commissioner Lopez. Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Okay, so noted. Next item, please.
County announcements.
County announcements. Nicole?
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Nicole Gibbs of the Community Relations, or, I'm sorry, of the Strategic Communications Department. February is American Heart Month. Heart disease is the leading cause of death for men and women in the United States, and almost fifty percent of Americans have at least one of the three key risk factors for heart disease. It is either high blood pressure, high blood cholesterol, or smoking. Take an active role in your health and learn what it takes to keep your heart healthy. Visit cdc.gov slash heart disease for more information. The Kansas Association of Counties is hosting County Day at the Capitol on Thursday, February ninth, at the Kansas State Capitol in Topeka. This event allows commissioners an opportunity to advocate for Cedric County and discuss the challenges we are facing in our county government. I'm excited to announce that the Excellence in Public Service Award nomination period opened today. In its thirty-fifth year, the award recognizes employees from the City of Wichita, Cedric County, and Wichita Public Schools who exhibit the highest standard of service. The nomination process is open through 5:00 PM, February twenty-fourth. To learn more or submit a nomination, you can visit cedriccounty.org. I also have, um, corrections here today to talk about their, uh, Juvenile Detention Facility Community Calendar, and I am inviting Steve to the podium.
Good morning, Steve. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm excited to be here to talk about something light today and nothing very serious, but we just wanted to let you know of a project that we, um, residents at JDF and JRF, the Juvenile Detention Facility, complete every year of artwork, and you all should have received a calendar from our staff. This has been a fifteen-year project that we complete annually that includes artwork from the residents at JDF and JRF, and then copies are given to, um, families going to court where they can list their phone numbers, their attorneys, their next court dates, and things like that. So, we just wanted to, um, lift this out to let you know about projects that happen in the detention center other than school. So, um, Monday through Friday, eight to five, or eight to three, they go to school, just like everybody else, but in the other hours, we have a team of independent living therapists and trainers who work on, um, activities, art projects, and we have about a hundred volunteers, religious and nonreligious, who come into the facility to help, um, enrich the kids' lives while they're in the facility. With me today, we have staff from Juvenile Services. We have Mario Salinas, who is the Deputy Director of Juvenile Services, Stacy Bell, who is the Juvenile Detention Facility Administrator, um, Carla Seymour, who's the Program Administrator, and Gracie Aless, Gr-Gracie Santiago Fernandez, who is in charge of the ILTs who produce the calendars. So, we just wanted to, um, recognize something good that we have going on in our facility and, and share that with you today.
That's very good, very good. Any comments from the, or questions from the Commission? I don't see anything. Thanks again, Steve. We might be experiencing some technical difficulties, but, uh, we're working through it. We want to make sure that, uh, Commissioner Lopez is available and, and watching and, and present. Okay. Next item.
I can hear now, so, thank you.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all we have for today. If anybody in the crowd would like to grab a calendar on their way out, they are at the entrance, and also, Commissioners, if you would like additional copies, let me know. I have some for you, too. I was really excited to get this, and I have it hanging in my office, and I'm pretty proud of this project for them. So, thanks for sharing with us. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Very good. Is there any questions? Commissioner Lopez, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Commissioners, we did not receive any email, uh, for the public agenda as of five o'clock last night, so, uh, we will move on. We do have a number of people signed up for, uh, public comment. Uh, I assume some of them, most of them maybe are here for an agenda item, and if so, we will recognize those people during the agenda item. Um, but is there anybody here that signed up that wants to address the Commission outside that agenda item or for any other reason? And I don't see any, so we will, uh, close the public agenda, and, uh, next item.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Commissioners, you had a chance. We're going to cover each of these individually because, uh, um, one of the Commissioners was, uh, not present, so on item A, the, uh, you had a chance to review the minutes of December fourteenth. Are there any questions, comments? Being none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Abstain.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item B, Regular Meeting Minutes of January fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, same as before. Commissioners, you had a chance to review the minutes of January fourth. Were there any additions or corrections or comments? Being none, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the minutes of January fourth.
Second.
Motion and a second. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Abstain.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries, and, uh, next item, please.
Item C, Regular Meeting Minutes of January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Commissioners, you've had a chance to review the, uh, minutes of January eleventh. Any comments, corrections, additions? Uh, being none, I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the minutes of January eleventh.
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, being no comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamations. Item D, Proclamation Declaring Black History Month.
And we've asked Commissioner Beatty to.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. A proclamation of Cedric County, whereas each year, Black History Month is observed in February, and whereas the origins of Black History Month date back to nineteen fifteen, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson founded the organization known today as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, and whereas observing Black History Month provides opportunities to gain a deeper understanding of African-American history and acknowledge the centuries of struggles for equality and freedom, and whereas Black History Month also celebrates the achievements and contributions that African-Americans have had, that have made in shaping our country, society, and communities, and whereas to participate in observing Black History Month, those interested can visit the Kansas African-American Museum in Wichita to learn more about African-American history in Kansas. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby proclaim February two thousand twenty-three as Black History Month in Cedric County, and encourage everyone to observe this month by acknowledging the history and challenges faced by African-Americans and paying tribute to this community for its strength, perseverance, character, and contributions, all of which enrich our lives. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proclamation declaring Black History Month.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? I don't see it this time. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the proclamation will be accepted by Denise Sherman, the President of the Kansas African-American Museum.
Good morning, Denise Sherman. Welcome to the meeting.
Can I go and make a few comments?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you so very much for allowing me this time to, uh, share a few comments, if you don't mind. Uh, first of all, greetings to Chairman Meitzner and Commissioners Beatty, Howell, Lopez online, and then Dennis. Um, first, before I get started, I would like to acknowledge, uh, a visitor that is with me today, Mr. Brad Richards, who is a fellow at the Kansas African-American Museum. He is part of the Lead for Kansas Leadership Program, and he's spending the year with me learning leadership, um, opportunities. This is his first Cedric County Commission meeting, and so I wanted to acknowledge that and let you know that in addition to, uh, acknowledging Black History Month, we are certainly striving to develop new leaders for the future. And so, as we welcome Black History Month, um, at Kansas African-American Museum, we certainly want to continue to honor the work and the efforts of those who have gone before us, those who are currently making strides, and then for the future. And with that, just a brief overview of what the Kansas African-American does is that we endeavor to make the African-American experience relevant and resonant with every Kansan and beyond, and we say beyond because we have made efforts beyond Cedric County, uh, across the state, region, and globally. And simply put, we are culture, and so when you come to the Kansas African-American Museum, it is very important that you understand that our umbrella of culture embodies everyone as well as our four pillars, which is art, history, music, uh, art, history, education, and culture, which is how we move forward with our guiding principles. You mentioned Carter G. Woodson earlier and his efforts to make this month possible, which actually started out as a week and then moved to a month in the nineteen seventies. It's very important that all, uh, all, uh, citizens understand that African-American history is American history. As we move forward with, um, use, uh, as we move forward with this month, we encourage you to not only come to the Kansas African-American Museum, but also visit other areas within this, this wonderful city and this wonderful county that are also celebrating. We have several, um, st-uh, locations with, uh, the, um, with the, um, Reflection Park, the Chester I. Lewis Reflection Park. We also are partnering with Exploration Place, who is doing an outdoor exhibition that are honoring four, uh, African-American scientists throughout the month, starting today. And then we also honor, which will start with Junius Groves, uh, which is an African-American, um, entrepreneur who, um, was called the Pa-ka- Potato King and did wonderful things in the early eighteen hu- nineteen hundreds. We will also finish with June Bacon Bursey, uh, who is a twenty-twenty-two Kansas trailblazer who was born right here in Wichita, Kansas, who was the first African-American meteorologist, and she was the first African-American woman who was on broadcast TV. And so, with that, we invite you to come to the museum, learn more about Hattie McDaniel, the Doc M. Siden, Ron Walters, Chester I. Lewis, and Donald Hallwell, who was a civil rights, uh, leader who, um, was with the Martin Luther King, uh, group, and then Trailblazers Hall of Fame, which, of course, embodies June Bacon Bursey, Dr. Kevis, Reverend Devis, Reverend Dr. Kevis Harding, Delano Lewis, and Roy Boye. Our new location is what we are most proud of as we are striving for the future to move to two oh one North Main, and so we welcome and, and, uh, thank you for all your support, past, current, and present, in making this possible.
Denise, thank you very much. Thanks for your leadership, and it's exciting to see the, the, the new world in, here locally with your, with the move, and, uh, Brad, is it Brad? Brad, welcome.
Brad Richards.
And, uh, good luck with your future, and always glad, good to have.
Thank you.
Refreshing, uh, youth participating, so, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner Beatty.
Denise, thank you for being here today, and Brad, welcome. I didn't, are you from Wichita or where? I'm from Kansas. He's a Kansan. So, I just want to encourage people to, to visit our, uh, the Kansas African-American Museum. Uh, I think, once you learn the history of, uh, and the role and the fingerprint that the African-American community in Wichita and in Kansas broadly has had in the, in the overall civil rights movement, uh, and, and the continued fight for equality, and, uh, and I, I, this museum tells a unique story, and the story this museum's going to continue to tell for future generations as you move to the new location. I just think everyone, if you haven't been to this museum, if you haven't taken your children to this museum, I want to encourage you to take them there. This is a rich part of our history. It tells an incredible story, and I'm incredibly excited about what's to come for the museum and the new location, and, uh, and for those that are, that are curious or want to know more about what's coming with this museum and, and the new location that will be coming soon, uh, I want to encourage you to reach out to Denise. She's, uh, she's a wealth of knowledge, wonderful for this community, so I'm, I'm glad you're here today. I'm glad for this proclamation, and I'm glad to, to stand in support of what's coming for the Kansas African-American Museum.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission? And, uh, wait, Commissioner Howell? Oh, yeah, and we're going to take a quick picture also, uh, pick, come up here, but Commissioner.
I just wanted to say, um, this is a quick comment here. I've, I was horrible at history when I was in school, and I've learned as an adult to appreciate history, and I think that Kansas is, is especially rich with black history, and I love the fact we have some great stories that you teach us through the museum about black history, especially in Kansas. I want to say thank you for what you do. And for anybody who isn't going to hang on till the agenda item where you're going to expound if you're on the, uh, museum and its performance for this year, um, I just want to make a pitch right now to say that, uh, you guys are, uh, trying to move, and donations are welcome, and you would be glad to see some support from anybody who's listening right now that would like to see the, the move to the new location there. I think it, uh, is it Second and Main Street? Second and Main Street, a great location, so anybody who wants to help out, uh, please make a donation today. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Allen. Denise, and that was, apparently that was your phone doing the background music? I thought, I thought it was mood music or something during your speech. Okay, thank you. We stand up here or down there? Okay.
Oh, my gosh, well, this, I feel special. Thank you. Our future leaders? Okay. And thank you for being so kind and gracious.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item E, Accept the Resignation of Shelley Seidel from the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. Uh, item E is the resignation of Ms. Seidel from the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board. This is Commissioner Dennis's appointment. Each of you have two appointments to this board, I believe. It's ten-member board, uh, and she is requesting to resign from the board as you approve the resignation.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Shelley for her service on this, uh, board, uh, for about the last six years. Uh, she's passionate about, uh, taking care of animals. Uh, she's going to be a great loss on this board, uh, but I do appreciate her service. Uh, that means that I do have an opening on this board, so if anyone is interested in serving on, uh, the animal, uh, control board, I, uh, we have applications on our website. Uh, they're welcome to do that, and, uh, as long as I'm talking about it, I've got, uh, an opening on the Solid Waste Committee, too, so I might as well make a pitch for some of my openings at the same time. But again, I want to thank Shelley, and I move that, uh, we accept her resignation.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item F, Resolution Reappointing Joe L. Norton to the Cedric County Public Building Commission.
Mr. Papun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, again, County Counselor. We can, if it's the will of the board, take items F and G together. Both of these involve reappointments to the Cedric County Public Building Commission. Uh, this is a five-member board, uh, established by charter resolution as county, uh, that's, that occasionally oversees the issuance of bonds and construction and acquisition of land for county projects. Uh, item F is the reappointment of Joe L. Norton, who many of you might know as our former longtime Bond Counsel for Cedric County, uh, we'd now retired from Gilmore and Bell, and item G is the reappointment of Jonathan Holmes, Commissioner Howell's appointment to the Public Building Commission. The resolutions are in proper form and as you approve the resolutions.
Okay, um, Commissioner Howell, you want to go first?
Yeah, well, I will, I'll be making a motion that we would, uh, approve the resolutions appointing these two folks, Joe Norton and Jonathan Holmes, but let me just say about Jonathan real quickly. Um, I've known him, uh, anecdotally. We've, we've met a few times, but, uh, he's, uh, he's been faithfully waiting for a meeting. We haven't actually had to do anything in PBC, I don't believe, for the whole time you've been on this board, but one time. But I do believe with the admin building around the corner, hopefully we'll see you guys get very busy with that. So, uh, I know you're the perfect, you're the perfect appointment for this board, so I, I'm very glad to make this, uh, uh, make this, this nomination this morning. But Chairman, again, my motion is to, uh, approve the resolution, uh, reappointing these two people.
Okay, and I will second that motion, and also want to acknowledge that, uh, Joe Norton is in the audience, too. Joe is a, uh, a, a walking history of our community, uh, for both in the city and the county, and Joe, your, uh, your contribution to our community is, is so noted and, uh, and truly appreciated, and our friendship as well, so thank you, Joe, and, uh, all right. So, with that, we have a motion and a second to approve Joe Norton and Jonathan Holmes, so, um, motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye, and here to swear you in, Mr. Kelly Arnold.
Good morning, Commissioners. Okay, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Cedric County Public Building Commission, so help me God. Congratulations.
Okay, congratulations. Do you want to make a comment?
Yep. I'd like to say thank you to Commissioner Howell for the reappointment. Um, I am looking forward to doing something. We had one bond issue that we looked at to reconsider, but that was it, um, and I'm honored to be able to serve. Thank you.
I would also like to express my appreciation for this reappointment, kind words of the Commission. I've enjoyed, uh, working with Cedric County for, I think, somewhere around forty years plus, so hopefully we'll be able to continue that. Thank you.
Hope you're enjoying retirement, Joe.
I know.
Okay. We won't keep you too busy. All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, Resolution Reappointing Nancy Larson to the Cedric County Solid Waste Management Committee in the First District, position number eleven.
Okay, commit, um, Mr. Papun.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. Again, we can take items H and I together if it's the will of the Commission. Item H is the reappointment of Nancy Larson. This is Commissioner Meitzner's, one of Commissioner Meitzner's appointments to the Solid Waste Management Committee, and item I is the reappointment of several other members to this board. Longtime Chairperson Nikki Solcy, Soicy. Uh, position two, uh, one of the positions is a representative from second-class city. Uh, this, and these are recommended by the Cedric County Association of Cities. Tom Jones is from Park City, is being recommended, uh, for the representative for this position. He's a council member there, I believe. Uh, position three is a third-class city representative. Uh, this is to be filled, uh, under recommendation of Cedric County Association of Cities, uh, by Terry Summers, the Mayor of Mount Hope. Solid Waste Management Committee oversees our solid waste management plan, uh, updates that on a yearly basis, and is responsible for, for that. So, uh, all the resolutions appointing, uh, these individuals, um... these resolutions.
Okay, thank you, Mike. This is a, we have a lot of boards that we appoint people to, and this is one that actually, that serves an important function for our, for our whole community, so thank you for all these people that are willing to serve and be appointed and reappointed. So I will make a motion that we approve na, items H and I, and the individuals associated with.
No, no comment.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second to approve, no other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries, and thanks again to all those. I don't think anybody's here to be re sworn in, so we will move on. Next item, please.
New Business. Item J, update from the Kansas African American Museum.
Okay, good morning, and we have Denise Sherman here to come up and present the, this is the update, which we had a little bit of update on your previous speech, but feel free to play the background music if you want to.
Well, basically, I did pretty much give most of my comments with this earlier, but what I do want to say is that we are so excited to move forward to our new building, and I'm going to just, if you don't mind, I'm going to fast forward, and, let's see. Again, this is where we are currently located, and I talked a little bit earlier about these points here. This is our partnership with, with Exploration Place this month, that'll start this evening, with the Potato King of the world. And then other noted African American historians that are part of our community at one point in time, George Washington Carver, which many do not know that, while he is the, well-known for the peanut and sweet potato, that he also lived in Kansas at Gates Center in Minneapolis, Kansas, as a youth, before he went off to become the world-famous plant doctor. One of the things I do want to share with you, as I did name these folks off earlier, that you can go to our website and learn more about our trailblazers, and this will be excellent month to do so, it's on demand. And again, these are the names of the folks that I shared earlier. And then here we are. This is a nice rendering of our proposed building at First and Main, 201 North Main, and we are just beyond super excited. We have campaign, a capital campaign of twenty, uh, six, seven million, six million, and we are three-point-two million who have raised so far. And this is what we have to look forward to in the next couple of years. As we celebrate our twenty-fifth anniversary, we think this is an excellent time to look forward to the future, and we appreciate the county's support in helping us get there. And that's it.
Well, that's nice. Thank you for sharing these, these slides.
You bet.
We talked about the new building, and it's nice to see a picture of it.
Well, you know, it's going to expand our footprint, it's also gonna double our space, it's going to be an op, wonderful place to restore and to preserve our collection, and most importantly, we will have space for cultural and education events. And so as we move forward to the future and bridge the past, we're working right now, as you said earlier, to raise these funds to get us to our new location.
Okay, a few comments. Denise, if you hang with us. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And Denise, thank you very much for being here, representing the Kansas African American Museum, and I just want to emphasize that name that I just said. The Kansas, Kansas. This is the state African American Museum, the Kansas African American Museum. If you haven't had an opportunity to go over and, and tour it, please do. Unfortunately, the facility is too small today, they have a tremendous amount of artwork actually stored beneath the steps downstairs that you won't have an opportunity to see, and that's why they, they knew that need a new facility. And this is something that I have been really trying to push forward ever since I've been a commissioner, to see if we can get them in a facility that meets the needs of the Kansas African American Museum. And this, the Sunflower Bank is something that we've talked about back when Mark McCormick was, was still here running the, the facility, and now through Denise's efforts, it's becoming a reality. If you have an opportunity to donate, please donate, because we need to finish the, the fundraising project to make the Kansas African American Museum a new home that's gonna serve our community in the future. Right now, if you go over there, it's surrounded on three sides by the Cedric County Adult Detention Facility, which is not an optimal location for the, the facility. The new facility is right on Main Street, so it can attract people from, that, that come into our community. I know that we've hosted the NCAA tournament at several times, and the players and the people that come in to, to look at this, they want a place to go to see what's happening in Wichita, and this is one of the things that they can go to see, and if we can get it on Main Street, it's really gonna be a draw. So thank you very much for your vision and for moving this project forward, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Beatty.
Mr. Chairman, two questions. The first is, you had referenced an exhibit at the Exploration Place, would you be able to give any details of what that is? Are you aware of exactly what they're doing at Exploration Place?
Yes, well, first of all, we partner with many of our other museum and cultural centers throughout the year, and this is our second opportunity to host an outdoor exhibition with Exploration Place, who focuses, focuses on scientists, and so this year, again, we are in partnership with them, so when you drive by Exploration Place, at night, you will see an image for one week, for each week, we'll have a new African American scientist highlighted. This week, it'll be the Potato King, Junius Groves, and over the next four weeks, we will have a new person start every Wednesday, and then you will have a QR code, and then you will be able to go to their website and our website both, and learn more about the scientists.
Wonderful. Second question, and I, I, I'm not certain that these conversations have even begun yet, so this is, I'm asking for your opinion. When you do make the transition to the new building, the new museum, in your opinion, what would you like to see done with the old building?
Well, that's an excellent question. Of course, we know that the final decision is up to the county, is you are the owners of the building, and again, we appreciate the opportunity to have, be housed in that building for this many years as you have allowed us to do so and support us. It would be really nice for that building to be repurposed, for the use of the community, and possibly in a way that will help with the betterment of our society. That building was formerly a church, it's over a hundred-four years old, so it has been used not only as a church early, in early Wichita, as one of the original settlement, it's only one of two buildings that are left from the original African American community in nineteen-seventies, about seventy-two, as buildings were being removed from the area, that was, building was up for demolition, and Doris Kurt Larkins, of course, was one of the members of the church who actively pursued the opportunity to preserve it, which has been part of our history and heritage, being housed in that building. It served as the first African American, the first national black historical society at Wichita for twenty-some-odd years, and then became the Kansas African American Museum in nineteen-seventy-five. So as we celebrate our twenty-fifth anniversary as an art museum, knowing now that the building has served us well, it is imperative that we must, in order to be viable in the future, to have accessibility and visibility, and, again, being surrounded in a space that is not always the best for our visitors and our, our community to come to the museum. We do have issues with technology, we have issues with parking, and all of those things. We know that a new building will help us better preserve our collection and offer services, and we would love that building to be repurposed, if possible, to serve the community in some other way. It is a beautiful building, and it still has life.
Thank you.
Okay, don't see any other comments. Commissioner Lopez, did you have a comment?
Just real quick, I just want to say, Denise, thank you so much for being here today and, and sharing all of this really exciting stuff that's coming up. That's the first time I've been able to see those pictures, and I'm just so excited to get you guys in our building, and, and then to come visit once you're in that new space, and to see how great it is. So congratulations on everything that you guys are doing there, and just really excited for you.
Well, thank you, and congratulations to you, too, with your-
Thank you. We appreciate it.
With the beautiful babies.
Okay, Denise, thanks again.
All right, thank you, thank you so very much.
It's been, it's been a joy working with you. Thank you. Okay, that was just a receive and file, motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion and a second, no other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item K, CON twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero four-five, conditional use request in the county to permit an event center on property zoned. Are our rural residential district located on the east side of South Hydraulic Avenue and within one-quarter mile of northeast Eighty-seventh Street South? Address is eight-five-five-eight South Hydraulic.
Okay, thank you. Scott, welcome, but before we get started, because probably many of you might be, your first time here at one of these zoning cases, we will have a presentation from Planning Department. The commissioners may have questions or dialogue directly with Mr. Wadel on, on the item, and then after those questions happen, then we'll go to the public comment, and so we will call each of you to come up and, and make your statement, and then there may be some interaction between a commissioner and, and one of you as a speaker, or all of you, so that can happen, and then we will close, when we close the public comment, then it comes back, officially comes back to the bench for further discussion, and then ultimately a vote, so, but once the public comment session is closed, then, then respectfully, we, unless a commissioner engages one of you to come back up, which is rare, but it could happen, but that's kind of the, that's kind of the order, just so you know, know how we're gonna, we do this. So, thank you for letting me explain this. So with that, Mr. Wadel, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department, that, I think that's a great overview of the process, and I would just add that the applicant will also have an opportunity to speak as well.
I'm sorry about that, yes, thank you, Scott.
So this is a conditional use application, the applicant's requesting a conditional use in order to allow an event center in the county on property that is currently zoned rural residential. The, the item is being presented as a non-consent item because protests were received on the case, and because the Citizen Advisory Board and Planning Commission recommendations are different. In terms of the, the property site, it's generally located on the east side of Hydraulic and north of Eighty-seventh Street South. Subject site is just under five acres in size, and is currently zoned rural residential and undeveloped. You can see it here, outlined in red. Here's the map that shows the zoning of the property. The applicant is applying, again, for a conditional use for an event center in the county. The applicant has indicated that they intend to develop approximately a five-thousand-square-foot assembly space, and offer the site for rent for weddings and similar events. They have indicated that the events will generally occur indoors, however, ceremonies would be permitted in the meadow southwest of the proposed facility during restricted hours. The applicant has also intended that they, they would maintain the existing tree line along the property's perimeter, adding additional trees and plants where necessary, that they would install a screening fence along the property line, and I point out, those are illustrated on the site plan that they submitted as part of the application, that they would limit the hours of operation for the rental of the facility, Monday through Thursday, ten AM to six PM, and Friday through Saturday, nine AM to eleven PM, and that they would limit the use of the meadow for outdoor ceremonies to the times between noon and seven PM, that they would require paid security at all events, and that they would restrict amplified music to the insulated indoor facility. And so, just to highlight, those are all things that the applicant has indicated, it's their intention to provide. In terms of context, as you can see on the aerial here, it's largely surrounded by rural, by residential developments, so to the north and east, you can see properties that are zoned SF twenty, and developed with single-family homes. For, to the south, you can see homes that are zoned rural residential, and very similar, again, to the west. In terms of review, on December thirteenth, the Citizen Advisory Board for District Two considered this application, that, that board recommended denial of the request with a seven-to-two vote. On December fifteenth, the Planning Commission considered this application. Planning Commission recommended approval of the request, subject to some conditions that I'll highlight in just a moment, their vote was thirteen-zero. Multiple members of the public spoke at, during that event. In terms of the MAPC conditions, they include that the applicant shall submit a site plan, further details are contained in the staff report, again, that all permits and approvals would be obtained, that they would be in compliance with the Unified Zoning Code, and especially supplementary use regulations, which are detailed in an attachment to the staff report, that the size of the events would be limited to the occupancy of the assembly space, and that all events would end by seven PM, Sunday through Thursday, and eleven PM, Friday and Saturday, that the use of the meadow would be restricted to the times between noon and seven PM, and that amplified music would be restricted to the indoor facility and not permitted outdoors. In addition, they required, had a condition, they're recommending a condition that paid security would be required during all events, and that patrons would not be permitted to loiter on the property following events, that all guests must vacate the property within thirty minutes after the event ends, and the host must vacate the property within an hour after the event ends. In terms of protests, multiple protests were received for this case, the protest area totaled sixty-two-point-seven percent of the protest area, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners must, if you move to approve, must be done with four out of five votes. In terms of the actions, it is, the Planning Commission recommends that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the conditional use request, authorize the chairman to sign the resolution, and authorize the resolution to be published. Again, that would require four or five votes. Alternatives include that you can deny the application by making alternative findings and override the MAPC recommendation. This would also require four of five votes in order to override the Planning Commission, or as always, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for further consideration with a statement specifying the basis for returning it, and that requires a simple majority or three of five votes. So with that, that's the overview, I'll take you through some of the graphics and images now. So, again, here's the subject site, outlined in red. Here's the zoning map, as you can see, we've got SF twenty zoning and rural residential zoning primarily in the area. This is the map from the comprehensive plan, showing the future growth areas, so it's just outside, across the street from Hayesville, Hayesville's future growth area. This is the site plan that was provided by the applicant. As I mentioned earlier, it shows proposed fences along a portion of the perimeter, as well as trees. It details the parking lots, the location of the structure towards the center. This is the protest map, again, it exceeds the twenty percent state threshold, so will require a supermajority in order to approve the application. The ones in red are within the protest area, the ones in blue are outside of the protest area, and then yellow and purple ones that were invalid. Typically, this is because of missing signatures or failure to prove ownership. Here are photos from the site, so this is looking at the site, this is looking across, looking to the north, across the street, and back to the aerial. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, is there any questions at this point from any of the commissioners? Respectful Commissioner Lopez, in your district, do you have any questions at this time?
I don't have any questions at this time, no, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Howell has a question.
Thank you, Chairman. Just one question, so this is, is this close enough to Hayesville that they have a chance to, as a city council, to weigh in on this?
Well, they would always have an opportunity- Well, they would always have an opportunity if they so chose, but in terms of the formal process, it was across the street from their growth area, so it did not go to their Planning Commission.
So they have not issued an opinion on this in any way?
Not to my knowledge.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
And with that, yes.
Ex parte County Counselor, if I may at this point interrupt, this might be an appropriate time for commissioners to announce whether they've had any ex parte communications with any of the individuals involved in this process. And another point that might be made is in general, I think we let the applicant present first and then allow the opponents or other people to make comments.
Okay, thanks for the reminder, Mr. Counselor. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have received numerous emails on this subject, so I have received ex parte contact. I am still have my mind open and am going to listen to the testimonies today.
Okay, Commissioner Beatty?
I also have received numerous emails, ex parte communications, and also have communicated that I'll maintain an open mind on the matter based on what we hear today.
And Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. So yeah, I also have received numerous emails. I didn't respond to most of them. I also received a couple of phone calls, and I had brief conversations with a couple of the opponents. But as I stressed on the phone with those folks, and I'll stress today, I'm completely neutral. I'm with the hearing, speak to me today. Thank you, Chairman.
And Commissioner Lopez?
The same. I've had numerous emails and phone calls over the last handful of weeks, and I'm keeping an open mind until the end of this. Thank you.
Okay, and I also have had ex parte communication from numerous emails and a couple of phone calls. And I also, as a follow-up to what Commissioner Howell had asked, I did have a discussion with the mayor of Hayesville to ask of their interest or not. And he reported back to me that they were pretty neutral on it because it was outside their area of influence. So we did reach out. And I think that's everybody's, and obviously, we're all remaining an open mind to see what we're gonna hear and make a decision. So thank you. So next up, is there any other questions for Scott at this point? And I don't see any. So let's invite the applicant to come up and present. Please state your name and...
My name is Gift Uloha. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for your time and consideration as we address the plans we have for this conditional use change request. We are a small family-owned business and have been involved in the wedding market for nearly thirty years. We believe that quality-owned local businesses are the backbone to any community and would appreciate the opportunity to invest in the betterment of this area. Our family has been a part of the Wichita area for forty years. In fact, we have our own personal reputation and investment in this community, because we have lived in this community for the last seventeen years. Our family purchased this property nearly ten years ago. When we took ownership, the property was in desperate need of attention. Since we live adjacent, we wanted the property to be safe and maintained. There was no activity on the property leaving it open to people together and to dump their trash. There was no activity on the property leaving it open for people to come as they please. We feel that with purpose of use, this land will keep trespassing at a minimum. We have been wedding photographers for the past twelve years. While doing engagement photo shoots, we have utilized the natural setting of the five-acre property. Couples enjoyed the natural scenery and asked if they could also exchange their vows in this area. For the last few years, we have done a few of these hour-long vow exchange ceremonies with photography averaging four to five a year. Couples have enjoyed this and have asked if they can have their receptions there as well, but this was not possible. Therefore, the next step would be to consider a building in which the ceremony and reception could be held. We wanted, wanted to be mindful of the continued peace of this area, so we have given much consideration as how to do this. Low impact to our area is what we're striving to accomplish, as we have built in requirements to implement the peace that this community affords. We will not allow outdoor entertainment such as concerts at this venue. Most activity will be on a Saturday with a venue viewing by appointment only. Our business model does not include operations every day of the week. Noise is one of the concerning, most concerning areas. Much thought has been placed on this area. To achieve minimal noise, we will be adding an insulated building, wooden fencing that is set back into the tree line, additional trees, and no allowed outdoor amplified music per our contract. As you can see on our contract, we are taking precautions to reduce inc confined sound by requiring all doors and windows to remain closed during reception time. During hours of operation, we will be staffed and present. Additionally, during the reception time, paid professional security will be required. This helps to ensure guests adhere to the venue contractual rules. Professional security or off-duty law enforcement will be outside to monitor arrivals, departures, as well as parking lots. With our hours of operation, we feel that it gives the host the ability to still enjoy their event but not interrupt the natural rhythm that the neighborhood's peace and quiet. Hydraulic is a main street which is accustomed to traffic with good views in both directions. Any tree branches impairing views will be trimmed back and maintained. Additionally, planned lighting for the entry area will be installed plus temporary signage to help people easily identify the entrance. The lighting and signage will only be up during event times. This venue's traffic flow will be much different than that of a concert hall, church, or even a school. When these types of events are done, you have a mass flow of people leaving all at once. Our venue's two hundred people max occupancy will taper off over a four-hour period with not all leaving all at once. Some people will leave after pictures, some after dinner, and yet more after the first dance. It will be a slow release of people over an extended period of time. The venue will be supplied by its own water well and rely on its own septic system. There will be no strain on the local utilities. Outdoor lighting will be at a minimum and be contained within the property only during activities. In closing, we would like to reset our goals. There will be minimal disruption to what is currently naturally growing, no change to the look of the property seen by neighbors, structures put into place to protect the surrounding area from sound. This would be an insulated building, rules to enforce soundproofing, layered protection including wooden fencing and cedar trees. Our hours of operation will be Sunday through Thursday ending by 7:00 p.m. and Friday and Saturday, Saturday ending by 11:00 p.m. No amplified reception sound allowed outdoors by contract, paid professional security, camera security systems, contracts with all clients and vendors who come onto our property, two hundred guests maximum dictated by the fifty-one parking spots, on property water and well and septic systems. We agree and are willing to fulfill the recommendations that the M A P C staff and board has brought forward to help make this property a success. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Mr., can I call you Mr. Gift?
Sure can.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. That's a very respectful and well-thought-out presentation to us. I'm going to ask either you or Scott, in our packet that you gave us, the conditional use packet, you showed us a lot of slides, but I think you didn't show us the slides at slide twelve, twelve, thirteen, twelve, thirteen?
Ah, yes, sir. There were more. My apologies.
Yeah, just, just so for the record, so we can see what, and maybe Mr. Gift can describe what, what these pictures are.
Actually, how about if I turn it over to him to kind of take us through the inspiration photos?
Okay.
So our inspiration photos are just ideas of what we want to do. Again, we believe that the building shouldn't dictate what that area is. We want that area, that, the nature there to dictate that building. So as we live on the property, adjacent to it, I know my parents moved there seventeen years ago. They moved there for the scenery. So we don't want to change what the surrounding neighbors are seeing. That's why we brought back that fence line, fence line into the tree line. And again, chose a building that will not be offensive to people as they walk into their backyards or decks. This is an overview of that five acres that are in the center that's in blue. My parents live at the one eight, one oh one, East Eighty-fourth Street. And we also own the property we purchased three years ago, south, at A six twelve. That house was, came up for auction. It was, it needed a lot of work, and we're still in the process of working on the house as of now. This is just a simple view of kind of what we plan for the interior of the building.
Okay, I have a question, then we can see if others. So I'm kind of familiar with these venues from my, some of my days at the city council with some of those going in. So if you go to your slide, maybe thirteen, or twelve or thirteen, then either one. So all of the activity, including the ceremony and the, let's call it, if there's a reception afterwards, including a dance or music, whatever, is that all inside?
So the ceremony can be held outside in the meadow.
Okay.
Again, ceremonies are usually more intimate things. Where the noise will come from would be that reception. So the reception will have to be held inside. And again, being wedding photographers, we've had lots of these in barns like this. Some of these venues don't have restrictions, which means they can have their barns, their barn doors open, or they can have the dance outside. With any, without that contained, sound will travel. We're aware of this. So that's why we built into our contract, so the host will be aware of and have to sign off on, that when you have your reception, it will have to be inside with all windows and doors closed. So you will not be allowed to have a DJ outside for any type of dancing.
Okay. Well, that was my next question, so you answered it. Thank you, sir. Okay, any questions? Yes, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just, so inside the building, is there any type of sound limit that you're proposing inside the building?
Sound, sound limit as in decibel ranges?
I don't know how you, how you want to quantify that, but I'm just curious, how, you know, some DJs can get extremely loud.
Yes.
And let's assume that they did something extreme, and you could hear that music well beyond your borders of your property. Would that be okay? Or how would you mitigate that?
Definitely not. That would not be okay. So we have a working relationship with a lot of these DJs. We are the owners of the Wichita Bridal Expo. We've been doing this for thirty years. So we have lots of experience with these DJs, also a personal, a personal relationship. So that's something that before the DJ would have, can come into our building, they have to sign a contract saying that we are in control of the sound. So if we feel that it is inappropriate, we will adjust that sound based on, on what's going on that time. Also, since my parents' house is adjacent there, we can survey what that sound is doing from their back deck and have a very good understanding of, of how that sound is traveling.
Let me ask a question to Scott on that, based on his answer. Scott, so if there was complaints from the neighbors on noise, and it's not written out in the details of what we're approving to potentially today, in civil lawsuit that might ensue from that, how would they resolve that if it's not, if those, if those details are not lined out? In other words, you, it sounds like it makes great, it sounds like a great, great proposal, but it's not written out. You can explain how you, why you intend to do that, but if it doesn't work out that way, in a civil lawsuit, the county has no sound ordinance, how would that, how would that be looked at legally if there's not some details in here making that clear, what he just said?
Yes, sir. What I'm gonna do is defer to the folks from M A B C D to come down and provide some explanation about enforcement. So I think, I think part of your question is, if, if there's not a condition that addresses that, then how, how would there be enforcement from Sudry County side? The applicant has indicated it would be part of the contract, but again, that's a private matter. And we've indicated that as part of the conditions of the case, what's been recommended to you by the Planning Commission is that all music would be contained inside. But I believe your question is, what if there's violation of that? Or what if the noise inside is still creating a disruption beyond the property?
Let me restate my question. So they say that the music propagates beyond the boundary of their property. And they don't intend to do that today, but let's just say that's where we end up, and there's a civil dispute that results from that. Based on county law that we have today that applies all over the county, there's nothing in the law that deals with this issue of sound out in the unincorporated part of the county. So in this case, it sounds like there's good intentions, but based on those good intentions, it seems like there should be an offer on the applicant's side to say, here's how the, the opponents can be protected. I'm gonna articulate my good intentions by giving them some rights. I'll give up on the front end that if this ever happens, they can deal with this in a civil lawsuit, and that they would actually have something that, a contract or something in, a condition in this that gives them a right to win that case if that was to happen. Go ahead.
I'll jump in real quick. So, so currently, yes, there is nothing in, there's nothing in the conditions of the case that specify that if, the conditions in the case are simply that the music, any amplified music needs to occur within the building. So there's nothing that says if the sound travels beyond the property at a certain decibel level or a certain, or disturbance amount that would address that. It would really address us whether or not it's happening in the building. So, and Kelly, you can comment about noise ordinance or enforcement, or Kirk's?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kirk Spons, Assistant County Counselor. I'm just hopping the line a little bit since you're mentioning civil claims and things of that nature. Yes, so in order to address your concerns about amplified noise going off premises, as Scott alluded to, what would be in the contract between the applicant and any other users would actually not be binding in this case in terms of the conditional use. So were the commission wanting to impose restrictions on amplified music being heard off premises, they would have to add a condition to the, to the application as currently presented. There's not a specific condition in place that addresses that issue. Now, you're kind of alluding to civil claims that might be made in the future by outside entities. Really, that kind of extends beyond our scope here. So i- if we want to enforce it, then we would want to add a condition. And that way, that could potentially later be inspected and potentially prosecuted at the county court level. But with that said, in terms of the, you know, funk, the propriety of the inspections and capabilities, I would defer to M A B C D on how they could go about doing that.
Let me ask you a related question. So if the applicant, again, has, has agreed, it sounds like they've agreed to some of the conditions, for example, the fence on some portions of their boundary, some trees and things like that. If they fail to maintain their commitment to do the things that are outlined as conditions in this application today, is that a enforcement issue? Or is that, is that a civil, is that a civil issue as well? Could we, could we, could we actually go out there and say, you failed to maintain the conditions of this, we're going to essentially, you know, have sanctions on you until you, until you remedy this?
For things that are requirements such as trees and things of that nature, if they're not following along with the formal application, what is formally included, then that would be an enforcement issue?
We could, we could essentially impose sanctions and essentially stop their business until it was, until it was remedied then?
There's, there's things in our code, there are multiple routes to pursue. The first one would be potential enforcement through county court measures. But I think there is ultimately some opportunity in reviewing their, their conditional use as a whole.
Well, I, not, not in this case, obviously, but there's other cases where I see where we actually try to enforce things in county court, and it's just not very, there's not a lot of pressure from county court to do, to do compliance with county law. So if, you know, maximum fine, probably five hundred dollars, and there's a very, very patient court that works with people eternally, it seems like. So I don't know that there's a whole lot of pressure to bring in compliance if that's, if that's the remedy we're talking about. All right.
Along those lines, I would just add that if we find that they're not in compliance with the conditions, ultimately, as Kirk had indicated, one of the things could be that their conditional use can be revoked, so that they would no longer be able that their conditional use can be revoked, so that they would no longer be able to operate the event center at the site.
And that would come back for county commissioners for that to happen?
You know, I have not been through that process yet. It is a it is a clause that we put into the conditions, so I'll defer to others on that process.
I'll sit back and listen to the rest of the hearing. I appreciate the answers.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. If if we added something to the conditional use that affected the noise, my concern about this is that you have to be there in order to be able to determine whether it's a violation of of that condition. And we don't have staff that travels around to look at all of the different venues that we have. In addition, I don't even know if we have a meter that measures decibels that they could use to find out if there was a violation of the sound traveling across the property line. So I'm actually concerned about a couple of things. I'm concerned about the the noise level that could come out of this. We've had other venues. Actually, I've got one in my district that there's been a number of complaints on in the past, and I don't want to see that keep going forward. It's almost impossible to regulate. The other concern that I have, as you mentioned, there's about fifty parking spaces on site, but your building's going to hold two hundred people, and I don't see every vehicle showing up with at least four people in it. So where are they going to park when they can't park on your site?
So we based our parking off what the code calls for, which is four people per per car. That's what we based it on. We there is opportunity to add more parking if that if if need be, most definitely.
Okay. But my worry is, when you have fifty parking places and they fill up, is there a place to park on the street and what's that going to do to impact to the neighborhood?
Since it is off off hydraulic, they there would not be off-street parking. But again, there is quite a bit of land there that that could be used for overflow. So we could clear more land. Again, we don't want to disrupt trees, but there are some grass, grassy areas that that can be cleared for an overflow.
Yeah, that's all my questions right now. I may have some more later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lopez, do you have any questions?
Thank you. I think the two main questions I had were already asked, and that was just around the noise and around parking. So you've already answered both of those, so no other questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions or comments at this time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Gift for being here and sharing with your with your stuff. So we will now go into the public comment section. There is ten people signed up. We usually limit the comments to five minutes or less. So ten, if y'all talk five minutes, ten times five is you can do the math. So we would ask that try to keep your your points as as non-repetitive as is just out of respect for everybody, because the commission will be listening and may may engage with you back. And so that's where we'll start. So with that, any other questions from the commissioners at this point? No? Okay, we'll go with in the order that it was signed up. So first is Mark White, if you'd and next will be Brian Thompson or Tom Thomas, but so you can move your way down to be available. And so Mark, you can state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes, and the clerk will keep track of the five minutes. Okay?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. My name is Mark White. I live at eight four four five South Kansas Circle there in Hayesville. I'm going to respect go to rule number four, the golden rule that I've been indicated to. Length of time subject property has been remained vacant as zoned. The fact is, per the applicant, this land is purchased ten years ago. Per county record, the deed was filed on January twentieth, twenty twelve. According to their website and Facebook page, they have been advertising and illegally operating their business on a premises for three years. Golden rule number five, relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare is compared to the loss of value and hardship imposed upon the applicant. The fact is, noise and light pollution already adversely affecting the neighborhood properties as being a nuisance. According to the City of Wichita Ordinance, Section eight, point zero one, point zero five zero, definitions code of ordinance, Wichita, Kansas, municipal library, nuisance is defined as any condition which is injurious to health or a potential health hazard, or is indecent or offensive to the senses, or an obstruction to the free use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property on the entire community by the neighborhood, or by a majority of persons subjected to the condition. Such condition being no less a nuisance because the extent of that annoyance is, excuse me, because the extent of that annoyance or damage inflicted is unequal. That land value has substantially increased over the last ten years, and one option, instead of putting a venue, they could sell the property or put a single-family home or lot split. Therefore, there are multiple options for this property as is currently zoned rural residential. Do you have any questions for me?
Okay, any questions for Mr. White? And I don't see any, but thank you for your professionalism in addressing us and your information. Next up, we have, oh, Bren, sorry, I said Brian.
That's right. I'm used to it.
Bren Thompson, and after that will be Lindsay Dearduff.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bren Thompson. I live at seventeen twenty-nine East Eighty-fourth Street South. Our home is directly north and abuts the property of the proposed event center. We, in addition to the majority of our neighbors, obviously have a multitude of concerns should this be approved. Many of these concerns have already been or will be brought to your attention. However, considering that many of the reasons we do not want a commercial business in the middle of our rural residential neighborhood are completely valid, they may be viewed as opinions, hypotheticals, or gray areas. I would like to address the facts of this conditional use request in black and white as outlined in the nine golden rules of rezoning, which is what guidelines dictate a decision should be based upon. Golden rule number one is the zoning uses and character of the neighborhood. M A P C staff in the recommendation for denial stated suburban-scale residential development surrounds the subject site. All surrounding properties are zoned either single-family residential or rural residential. And the fact is, this conditional use request is not in character with the surrounding and abutting properties that are all zoned for rural residential or single-family residences. There is no buffering or room for buffering in going directly from single-family homes to a high-intensity commercial business open seven days a week, hosting two hundred people on site, particularly on evenings and weekends. Golden rule number two is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. M A P C staff stated the subject site is suitable for its current zoning. The subject site is currently zoned rural residential, which permits uses suitable for unincorporated Sedgwick County. The fact is, this property is suitable for its current residential zoning. It previously had at least one home on it. One or more single-family homes or a similar less intense use of the property would be a conforming use of the current zoning. Placing an event center normally requiring a minimum of twenty acres in the county on a property of less than five acres is not suitable for the current zoning of the subject property or the neighboring properties. On October sixth, twenty twenty-two, the planning commission voted to deny a very similar conditional use request for an event center, also located on less than five acres, also surrounded by single-family homes, and less than a mile north of this proposed facility. During the discussion, board members stated the following. I'm not going to be able to support this because, number one, it's out in the county on less than five acres. I mean, there's no noise requirements out in the county. We put those neighbors potentially in a position where if noise is really loud, they can't do anything about it because there's no noise ordinance out in the county. Another member stated, it's just simply surrounded by too much residential use, and it's a residential zone. If the applicant wanted an event center, I think they should have looked for a more appropriate location. A third member stated, the small acreage is my greatest concern. There's just not enough distance between the neighbors, in my estimation, for an event center. In November of twenty twenty-one, another proposed event center just south of us in Sumner County on nineteen point nine acres was denied by commissioners who stated, I just don't think this is a good fit for this area. Another commissioner stated, I know what you're trying to do, and it looks like a good plan, but I can't vote for this because of the location. Like these other proposed venue sites, it is not the business that we are opposed to. It is the proposed location in the middle of a rural residential neighborhood. That is why we respectfully ask that you vote to deny this request today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bren. Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you again for addressing us. And next up is Lindsay Dearduff, and Phil Hines will be next.
My name is Lindsay Dearduff, and I live at seventeen oh one East Eighty-fourth Street, which is directly north of the subject property. And I'm going to cover golden rule number three, which is the extent which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. The fact is, there have been many discrepancies with the applicant's presentations and at times at which he contradicts himself. The misunderstanding throughout the entirety of this entire conditional use request alone is detrimental. I mean, that alone is detrimental. So the small acreage is already without adequate buffering to transition and scale from an event center to the single-family residence. There is already ambient noise that is a nuisance with the current minimal acreage and the use of the meadow. It has been stated that there are no outdoor entertainment. Well, explain to me, what does the meadow mean then? Amplified music restricted to indoors only will not eliminate the sound of the multiple conversations that will travel onto our property from the two hundred guests or the barking from almost every dog in the neighborhood that hears strangers. It won't help the annoyance of hearing horns, alarms, trunks, or car doors slamming and people shouting across parking lots, preventing us from being able to enjoy our property regardless of the hour. I did want to see if I could get a clarification on the paid security. Is that a commissioned officer who is just off duty? Or is it just somebody hired to act as security? And then I wanted to see about septic systems. How many linear feet are required for a septic system to where it's not going to have waste seeping into my well water? And our neighborhood does not deserve to be forced to suffer from the noisy commercial business going on in our neighborhood. Our dogs will not deserve to be punished for barking and left inside or locked up while strangers get to be outside enjoying our neighborhood, our home, while someone who doesn't even reside in our neighborhood gets to make a profit off of it. The City of Wichita does recognize that entertainment establishments that serve alcohol, that they have demonstrated the potential for creating an environment where various types of disturbances, excessive noise, and disorderly conduct by inebriated patrons may occur. The negative effects are adverse to the public safety and quality and life in the community. And I'm also going to talk about golden rule number six, the conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive plan. The fact is, the conditional use is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan's locational guidelines that directly abuts the single-family residential properties without adequate buffering to transition and scale from the event center to the single-family properties. Is this really even an event center in the county? Based on the Unified Zoning Code, an event center in the county is the premises that is frequently rented out for public or private activities that are not repeated on a weekly basis. Since the applicant is proposing to operate seven days a week, this should be viewed as an entertainment establishment. An entertainment establishment means an event center, any person or entity which provides entertainment, or any person or entity which provides a venue for entertainment. Now, entertainment establishments where alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage will be offered, consumed, or served on the premises shall be considered a nightclub. So is this a nightclub? Is it an entertainment establishment or an event center? From what I'm understanding, an event center is so entertainment plus music plus dancing plus alcohol equals nightclub. Are the restrictions and conditions the same for an event center or the entertainment establishment or the nightclub? I think that the parking requirements for a nightclub, from what I have understood, is in the county are one per two occupants. And this proposed subject is four per four occupants per one space. So that's going to cause them to have to demolish demo more trees and, in fact, double the size of the parking space, just to allow that to happen, which is going to then create less buffering than we already have. So in this matter, I come before you today and ask that you consider the impact on our neighboring properties. Please do not allow the usefulness, enjoyment, and value of our home to be compromised by excessive noise, smoke, odor, glare, vibration, traffic, light, sounds becoming a greater nuisance than we are already currently experiencing, with the illegitimate land use for the sole purpose and pleasure and gain of a single spot within this zone to be approved because someone wanted to take a chance because of a well-put-together business plan. It is still in the wrong location and zone. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dearduff. As far as septic system, those are all under guidelines that are already already there. And as far as security, I think they're free to hire whatever security system that they can. So if that just answers a couple of your questions, but is that and I'm getting a nod of yes, so. Any other questions for for Lindsay? And I don't see any, so next up is Phil Hines, and Connie Boria will be next. Good morning, sir.
Good, excuse me. Good morning, I'm Phil Hines. I live at fifteen twenty-one East Eighty-sixth Street South, Hayesville. Dear Commissioners, Batty, Howell, Metzger, Lopez, and David, these are my thoughts on the the rezoning of the subject property from rural residential to commercial for an event center. Property size is objective, both as a it's a quantifiable quantifiable in exact terms, either as a requirement or as the property itself. Mitigations are generally subjective in nature and may or may not be difficult to know how they will work in the heat of the moment at the time of the event. Event centers in the county are permitted by right in the rural residential district on sites twenty acres or greater in size. This is objective and defined, yet it's a defined requirement, yet the applicant's plan is going forward with only four point six nine acres. Why is meeting the require a quantifiable, excuse me, a quantifiable requirement by less than twenty-five percent acceptable? It's not even close to the requirement, yet the residents surrounding the location are going to have their lives and properties impacted if this continues on. Revising the zoning is a forever penalty to the residents that have been in their homes for years and decades. It's it's a penalty that's forever in the rest of our lives, because most of us won't be around for for longer than. The the buffering issue cannot be resolved by its small space. Parking may be an issue, and this has already been brought up, but if the event is anywhere near maximum capacity, we should consider the following items. The applicant has stated that there will be a maximum of two hundred occupants. It's also been stated, two hundred guests, and I'm assuming that that may include vendors are grouped into the guest category. But in addition to the guests, there will also be staff. So these terms have been used in the meeting minutes and in the presentation. He has not stated how many staff and what their positions are that are required for two hundred guests, but that will be if it's two, it'll be clearly greater than two hundred occupants. Fifty-one parking spaces are available for the property. How will Mr. Ulo control having all his occupants, clientele, guests, and vendors, plus his staff, come to the events with four people per vehicle? Will Mr. Ulo require your staff to come four per vehicle? All parking spaces could be consumed by fifty-one attendees if they were to come individually in their in their cars, because that's the minimum number of people required in a car to operate it. And that's as as realistic as four people coming per car for two hundred guests. People frequently travel with less than four people per vehicle in the based on their individual agendas. Mitigations may may reduce risk or severity, but they are subjective and sometimes work and may not always work because of the variables that change for for each event. It may be difficult for all mitigations to work all at the same time. Mitigations should be temporary mitigation should be temporary and resolved by permanent solutions. Mitigations, what controls? Mitigations, what controls are in place at the time of the event? Will security deny guest entrance if they have reached 200 occupants or fill the 51 parking spots? Which, whichever occurs first? How will they prevent occupants from using our neighborhoods for parking and access to Sweet Tree when the maximum parking spaces are used or maximum occupants has been reached? Amplified sound has kind of been discussed. This is, this business is really applicable to a small percentage of the population for this business.
Mr. Hines, your five minutes is up. Can you just wrap up?
Yes. I respectfully request that you deny this zoning revision to commercial property and its conditional use request. The use of commercial property is for rural residential areas, far from being the required size for the buffering and, and for the surrounding residents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hines. Is there any questions? I don't see any. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Next up is Connie Boria, sorry, Boria. And next after that would be Monica Johnson.
Good morning. My name is Connie Boria, and I live at 1301 East 84th South in Hayesville. And my concern is the Golden Rule Number Seven, the impact of the proposed development on community facilities. In our area of the county, we have one community police officer who covers 36 square miles. A venue in our rural area introduces a use that could result in a higher challenge in providing public safety services, services for everyone in this area. Additionally, there are no fire hydrants in our neighborhood, and therefore we rely on the fire departments to bring in water tankers. This venue and the Butting Myers Lake addition each only have one entry point. This extra traffic is going to be a burden to this area trying to get in and out during these times. With 200 occupants attempting to enter or access this site, this will create an influx of traffic in this area, creating public safety concerns. Also, with the alcohol that's going to be served at these venues, that's going to put a burden on our community services such as the police, EMS, fire, whatever we need. So, in due respect, I would like to ask each one of you, would you want this venue in your backyard? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Beatty has a question for you. Do you want to stay there?
It's actually a question for Scott. Has, has there been a traffic study? And the question as to what public services and safety, public safety services are available for this area?
Sure.
Anybody speak to that?
Yeah, yes, sir. So, what we did is we reached out to Public Works. We've not had a formal traffic study done on this one, but we reached out to them to gauge the level of impact and what their assessment would be of the situation. They've indicated that with the entrance and exiting, coming on to hydraulic, and the size of the parking lot, that it shouldn't have a substantial impact. And Lynn is here from Public Works. But another comment that they had, though, was because of the wooded nature of the property and the configuration of the driveway, they did see that there could be some visibility issues in terms of getting in and out, so they recommended clearing out some of the vegetation in that area to improve the sightlines for folks.
Any other questions, Commissioner? Nope. Okay. Commissioner Lopez, I keep looking up. You're going to indicate if you want to ask any questions, so.
I will, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next up is Monica Johnson, and Michael Watson is, would be next after that. Good morning, and thank you for being here.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Monica Johnson, and I live at 1517 East 85th in Hayesville, Kansas. I am here to go over the Golden Rule Number Eight, opposition or support of neighborhood residents. The fact is, there were 107 signed petitions in total, with 53 with inside the 1,000 feet radius. That puts us at 62.7 petitions against this rezoning application. We also had other petitions that were signed that would have been rejected due to the fact that only one of the property owners' signatures were obtained. We have some properties that were in limbo due to death of the property owner, investment properties, and out-of-state owners. It was also a very, very difficult time to get with our neighbors due to the Christmas holiday, with some of our neighbors being out of town, the crazy snow squall that we had, sub-zero temperatures of 2022. There were additional petitions signed for neighbors in the rural residential area that live outside the 1,000 feet radius. Overwhelmingly, the citizens in our area are asking you not to approve this application, which will change the character of our rural residential, single-family neighborhood in which our land was intended. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Monica? Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next up is Michael Watson, and then Tanya Ridpath will be next. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm Michael Watson. Thank you. Hear me? I'm not going to go over the Golden Rule. They've already talked about that pretty much so, but I own a property at 8400 South Spruce, and I own the vacant lot next to that. If this is considered to rezone this to commercial, what, I own an air conditioning company. What's to keep me from rezoning, wanting to put an application to rezone that property next to me and, and build an air conditioning company on there, or putting a sheet metal shop on there? So, this is my concern, and there's several, several neighbors in this neighborhood that own the vacant lot next to them. So, what's to keep other people from coming forward and saying, oh, let's rezone this to commercial and putting in a plumbing company or a construction company? We're going to turn this area, we don't want to turn this into a construction or commercial area. We live here because of, we want to be in the county, we want to be out where we have our residential areas, and we like the property. We like to have larger properties. That's why I bought another lot. I bought another lot next to mine because I didn't want neighbors right next to me, and I definitely don't want a business next to me. But I also am a business owner. I pay $2,000 a month to have my business elsewhere that's in a commercial zoning area, not in a residential area. So, that's my comment, and thank you for listening to me.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any comments, questions? Next up is Tanya Ridpath, and then Mike and/or Pam Hamilton would be next.
Morning, Chairman. Commissioners.
Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for your time with all of this. I know it's all a crazy matter. My name's Tanya Ridpath, and I live at 1500 East 86th Street South. I can see this property from the top of my deck. I do have an upper-level home. I'm just going to kind of go off-topic here. First of all, Golden Rule Number Nine is that MAPC planning staff in District Two Cab, Hayesville, did recommend denial for this conditional use. So, that is going to be on that rule. The land use or the building was actually a lot of what came up in the MAPC meeting. We are voting on land use. I'd like to let you guys know that I did zoning for many, many years with Security First Title, worked with Mr. Savoy and everything, some of you Commissioners. And this is ultimately about the use of our land. It has nothing to do with a beautiful building. It has nothing to do with anything like that except what it was intended for. And this was intended for rural residential. A home was built there in the 1950. It's just not there anymore. Put one back on it. Look at the market today. We have a housing shortage. Split it up. Sell it. Use it for what it's meant for. It makes our area fit so much better. It used to be like that. It needs to stay like that. That is what is most important and matter. I also myself am a business owner. I purchased a $200,000 building to keep my business off-site. I keep my house and my area clean with my trailers if I have to bring them in because I respect my neighbors. Many years back, I was traveling down hydraulic between this spot and 79th. I was hit by a driver from behind me. I have permanent damage to my back because I had my foot on the brake waiting for someone to turn left into the neighborhood. I was hit at 82 miles an hour. It doesn't matter what that speed zone is. I was pushed 110 feet into oncoming traffic, and I was told, praise the Lord, you were driving that truck today, ma'am. You would have flipped upside down in that big old ditch and you would have killed yourself because they tried to get me out of a vehicle I didn't usually drive. I didn't get to enjoy myself with my children because of this when they were younger, because I couldn't ride rides and do stuff. I'd hate to see that happen to somebody else. This is a blind turn. If you don't know, it's there. I put it in my GPS after I hit 79th, and I hit my brake really hard when it said, turn now. I'm just sorry. Think of all these people that are going to come to a venue, and that's what they're going to have on their systems is the GPS. These are a lot of things we're not thinking about sometimes when we want to put something like this there. So, I just ask you guys to please really keep this in mind, that this is about the land use. And I also had some concerns on the fact that, you know, parking, when I go somewhere, you might park on the side of one of these dirt roads, go across the street, and I'm most concerned about if someone was to like take a fall on my property or something like that, on who's going to get the liability or the lawsuit and things like that if someone was to be traveling across or cutting through or, you know, having their vehicle parked next to one of our homes and stuff like that as our driveway use. So, that was one of my big concerns. Other ones have already been addressed in that matter. So, I just ask you guys to please respectfully remember that this is about the land use and this is a rural residential area, and we would really like to keep it that way. And I appreciate your time in this matter today, Commissioners, and ask you to please deny this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ridpath. Appreciate any questions. I don't see any, so thank you for your time. Next up is Mike and/or Pam Hamilton, and then Larry Coppins. Larry, and I'm sorry if I don't have, can't read the other name, Coppins. Okay. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Mike Hamilton. I reside at 8429 South Hydraulic. I have the oldest house in that neighborhood, which all that land belonged to my house at one time or another back in the day. I would like to go over Golden Rule Number Four. A lot of the issues have been addressed already, so I'm not going to waste everybody's time. I do have a few things I would like to point out. The applicant has stated that his property has been a target of illegal dumping, which I've never seen that. It's gated. I've never seen the illegal dumping. None of our properties ever get dumped on, so as he was stating it was an illegal dump site, I can't say that's true. To my records, the property was purchased at a reduced price approximately 10 years ago. The property was never up for sale that we know about, because heck, half of us would have bought that property. We would have used it as an addition to our property. With the market of today and the current value of resale value, that property could be resold to residential. So, there is other options for the applicant to use that property for versus a venue in our backyards. We all have large properties. Therefore, I agree with one of the other persons that spoke earlier, is I have a large property in my front yard. What's to say that I can't rezone that property as a paintball war? Have people come and shoot paintballs on my property? I can house 50, 60 cars on my property, too. We all don't want that. I respect my neighbors just as much as they respect me, and we feel that you guys should not go with this rezoning of this property. I thank you in advance for your time and ask that you do consider all of our residents' reasons why we do not want this venue put in our neighborhood. One big thing is the alcoholism. Everybody knows, and everybody that's been to a party or a wedding knows there is drunks. Drunks get loud, get obnoxious. We are in the county. What's to say there's not a fight out there, guns going off? You never know what goes on in the county. So, all we're asking is that you honor our, our wishes and not allow this venue to happen. It can happen in any vacant building in Wichita or Hayesville or anything like that, but just not in a county that we worked so hard for to move out of the city to come in and have something like this in our backyards. So, I thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mike Hamilton. Any questions for him? I don't see any. Okay, next up is Larry Coppins. Oh, and Pam, I couldn't read your name, so sorry about that. Okay. Pam Coppins. Welcome, ma'am, to the, to the meeting.
My name is Pam Hamilton. I live at
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
8429 South Hydraulic, which is a catty corner across the street from this proposed place. And before I even get started here, I have to point out, it's kind of funny, when you look at this map, the area looks so big. And that, that was kind of striking to me when I see this big red square, because it looks like it's a big place with, like, everybody calls it a meadow. It's not that big. It's a, across the road, there's trees there. It's not really a meadow, it's just trees. It's just a property with trees. So, I'm taken aback a little bit by how appearances seem, because if you were to go and look, it's not as big as it looks. It's, it's an empty property with trees. There's not a rolling meadow, there's not something that you would think, oh, this is just awesome. It's just a vacant property with trees. It's not as big as it looks. So, with that in mind, this is a great concern to us on a personal level, okay? Because we like it out there. It's quiet. We like the tranquility. That's why we moved there. We moved there 17 years ago, and none of the houses were across the street when we moved there. My father-in-law had the house prior to that. Our house was built in 1885. It's been there a long time. I'm sure it's seen lots of things, but mainly what it's seen is people, residents, neighborhood, you know? Everybody comes together. And, you know, sure, people like to go to a wedding venue and be outside. They like it, it's pretty. But you know what? We like it, too. It's our tranquility. It's our happy place. That's, that's why we moved there. We didn't want to live in the city anymore. I used to live across the street from a school. Hated it, all the traffic, people coming and going all the time. I wanted to escape that. I wanted it quiet. I wanted to hear the birds sing. It's a totally different part of life, and we like it that way. You know, in the summer, we have neighbors across the street about the same distance. They have a swim pool in their backyard. I can sit on my front porch, and I can hear them talking. I can hear their music playing. You know, it's not all the time, and they, they quit early. They're decent people. But the point being is, it's no further distance either direction. So, if you have cars coming and going, people like to converse when they're talking, getting out of the car, whatever they do, you're going to hear that. There's not as many trees as everybody thinks there is. It's just a wooded property. So, what's to keep us from having to listen to that? I just don't see the buffering issue is going to work. It's, it's not going to be quiet. We hear the train miles away. We hear the turnpike. You know, sound travels really quickly in the county. I mean, it's just easy to hear. So, I am concerned about alcohol on the premises. We have grandkids that come over. We like to let our grandkids play in the front yard. We don't have to worry about any cars coming up. Our house sits three miles off the, or three acres back from the road, but, you know, we still have, we can still hear traffic, but we have safety out there, and I like that. I don't want to worry about some drunk person getting loud in an event. They're not going to care what the people that own the event say. They're going to do what they want to do, you know? The ditches are extremely deep on our side. They, they dug them really deep. They dug them really deep for the water issue. And many times if I'm turning in my driveway, you know, you have to hurry or people come behind you and, boy, I wouldn't want to go down in that ditch. I lost a trash can down there one day and I killed myself getting out. It would be dangerous for a car to have to be hit and go down in that ditch. And the congestion of all the intersections from our driveway, 84th Street, that property, there's a lot of places that intersect in a very small area. And, you know, he says people will come and go, I'm sorry, at staggered times, but I don't see that personally. I think it'd be a real serious problem traffic control-wise, too. So I thank you for your time. Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Pam. And next up is Larry Coppins. Hey, Larry. Welcome to the, welcome to the meeting, sir.
Good afternoon. Well, still morning right now. Thank you all for your time letting us all come out. I'm pretty much just your closer, right? Excuse me. So my name's Larry Coppins. I live at 8451 South Ash. From where this venue is looked to be, that's still a little jot from us. It's about almost a mile. With that in mind, everybody's waiting. The facts are the facts. The biggest thing is no one's against the business. It's the location. We want to keep it residential. We're concerned more about the safety. We're more concerned about the unnecessary noise. Got it? We're concerned about the traffic, the space. The facts are, it requires 20 acres out in our area for you to have a venue. If it's not 20 acres, then it should either become that or move it to a different location. Less than a mile away, another venue was offered up and it was denied. So with that, what now changes or prevents other people from doing the same thing? One mile from there or another mile away? Ultimately, we are trying to raise a family out there and we would like to keep it that way. That's about it and we appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. That is the last speaker. Out of courtesy and respect, would the, like to invite the applicant back to the podium to address any, if you were taking some notes, there was some, there were some valuable value comments made and...
Yes, very, yeah, very much so. You know, before the meeting here, I talked to Wendell Funk over there at the WIBA. And he made a comment that, that I, I took to heart. He said, people matter. I understand that. Neighbors not matter. We have reached out and had conversations after the MAPC meeting on concerns and what we could do to help. One was sound. How do you stop sound from traveling? One neighbor said, when doors open, how do you stop noise from escaping as they enter and exit? You can build a structure that gives you a two-door exit. You have to go in one door, close it, out the other. Again, ideas like this, if we work together, I feel we can come to, to a place where everyone will appreciate what we are offering. I grew up in the College Hill area, which you have, you do have a strong mixture of business and residents. And if you know anything about College Hill, people are very much appreciative for what that area offers. So we feel over time, if we can gain the trust of our neighbors, they will come to appreciate what we do have to offer here. When it came to the, the prior meeting we had, yes, a venue was turned down a mile north through the MAPC board. They were dealing with a one-acre venue with the building, the actual building being as close to under 100 feet from a neighbor's window. We are on five acres. So it's different circumstances. Again, we did have all 13 commissioners vote in favor of, of our venue. Commissioner Blick stated that they did approve a venue in Hayesville, 71st and Hoover. There was a lot of complaints at the time of the meeting, but as the venue has been built, they have not had any sense. Blick also did say property values and development has been, has increased over farmland. So when you're looking at farmland, we've had, this happened in South Wichita before, where we have had people move out there wanting peace and quiet. And then here comes businesses, here comes development, here comes everything else. That's just growth that happens. As far as traffic and again, parking, I think parking has been brought up quite a bit here. We do have the ability to add additional parking. We just based that off the standards that were provided for us. And that was 4-2-1. Whatever overflow parking that would be, we have conversations about that. Again, that was just a standard. There is the ability to add more parking, again, with very minimal tree loss. If you look on this map right here, on that northwest corner, we weren't really touching that area. Again, that's this high grass. We can most definitely add more. We would just have to, I guess, kind of be guided in what direction, how many that would be, I guess, past that standard. I don't know if you have any more questions for, for me?
Okay. Thank you for coming up and addressing. Commissioners, any questions or comments to the applicant? Or again, Commissioner Lopez? No? Yes? No?
Nope.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
So with that, we will now close the public comment and bring the discussion back to the bench. And obviously, Scott Wadele is available as well on the commission. So who wants to say anything first? So with Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I may need to come back and ask more questions in just a moment as well, but I read some of the backup material that's in our book here. And on one of the comments, it says that the planning staff initially made a recommendation as to deny. Is that true?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Can you please explain why?
Yes, sir. It was predominantly because of the proximity to the residential developments. It was because of the comprehensive plan and locational guidelines that have been referenced before in terms of, again, the proximity to the residential uses.
Regarding the comprehensive plan, what was the conflict there?
It's, there's a series of locational guidelines that are included in the comprehensive plan. They speak in general about combinations of different land uses. So unlike the map that folks are more familiar with, that point out residential, industrial, et cetera, these are text bullet points that make statements about proximity and uses close to each other. One example that comes up frequently is the buffering of residential uses for more intensive things such as industrial. Commonly, we see things like warehouses or something come in that provide a little bit of a buffer.
Thank you for that answer. Right now, I have two more questions and a comment. And I'll maybe come back and ask more questions in just a minute. But in the backup material, I see there was a question regarding ADA, ADA access to the, to the facility. And it says that you would have to check into that. Is there an answer to that question?
Well, it would be, would be required. I'm going to look to MABCD. But yes, for this facility and for the parking spots, it would be required to meet ADA.
They would comply? Okay.
I am curious about the sanitation part of this. You talk about 200 people on a septic system. This is not, someone stated earlier, I'm not sure who said it, but they said it's not a very big area. You know, just looking at the, the overview, what I'm looking at there, it's roughly about, can, anecdotally, about the same size as maybe six of those lots added together, at the most, maybe even less than that, four to six lots. And this is a rural residential.
Is there normally a, is there normally a square acreage that is typically seen in rural residential zoning?
My understanding is that it typically depends on, that mostly depends on the septic systems and that we see one acre or above being the typical sizes because of the minimum acreage requirement for septic systems.
And if you had a, if you did have a one-acre residential lot and you had a, a single-family home on there, the, the septic system must be sized based on the square footage of the house, I would assume.
I would assume so, too.
And there is a certain number of occupants that requires a certain size of septic system. So in this case, we've got, someone said seven days a week. I know there's, there's limited late-night stuff here, but they could have events during the daytime, seven days a week, if I understand correctly. And they're up to 200 people. So how do you manage that on the septic system? It's, I guess I'm just concerned about 200 people on a septic system sounds, is there some, is there some, how do you, how do you size a septic system when you have potentially 200 people in a venue?
Good morning. Kelly Dixon, Metropolitan Area Building and Construction. To answer your question, we size those based on federal guidelines. The EPA has put out sizing guidelines for number of people, for a type of facility based on kitchen facilities and so forth. But we would look at it as occupancy times, however many gallons per day that the EPA recommends for that type of an activity or facility and would size the system accordingly. So on a tract this size, you know, with 200 people, I can't give you the exact number, but I'm thinking it's around four, four and a half gallons per person. So you'd be looking at 800 gallons per day, which is about a six-bedroom house. Now, it's a high-strength waste, so oftentimes, we recommend an extra septic tank in there so we get a little extra holding time to, to spread that out. But that's a pretty sandy soil down there, so it doesn't take quite as much space as we would in a heavier clay.
Since I still have you, I'm not sure if you or Scott should answer this question, but the, the average of, as I said, 50 cars times four people per car, is there some math or guideline that we follow to come up with those numbers or is that, is that just, where did that come from?
I don't know. That was, that was put in when this event center and the, what was it called? The Ag, when the Ag Tourism idea came together and the zoning code was changed to allow for these types of facilities, farmers' markets and so forth, that parking requirement was placed in at that time.
It seems like there should be a range of cars. In other words, you might say if it was, you know, 50 cars times four, that would be 200 people, but it could also be 200 cars. And so I guess I'm just curious, 50 to 200 is probably really the, the range of cars. Go ahead.
And one thing I would point out is that the, the parking requirement is the minimum amount of parking that the applicant is required to put in place. And that is assuming, of course, that you're getting a group of folks to go into a car together and, and travel there. So the applicant has the ability, has, you know, they can, they have the ability under the zoning code to put additional parking if they so choose, but we set a baseline of what the minimum is.
But if they don't do that on their own property, then it's going to be surrounding streets. So they could...
That is correct. There would be spillover impacts in that case.
Okay, so I have a concern about that. And then I guess, just doing some simple math, and I'm not the smartest person, I don't think, but just doing some simple math, the size of this 4.3-acre lot with a 5,000-square-foot facility on it, I know these are not squares, they're rectangles. But if they were squares, which would maximize your distance, by my, by my math, it seems like it would be roughly at, 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 one of the distances will be, will be longer, one will be shorter, but this is giving you an average number. It'd be 432 square foot lot. And if you subtract the, the size of the facility, being 71 square feet, just doing some, some of the math here, you basically have about, I forget the number now, but about 100, about 100, I'll do the math again in just a second. It's about 150, about 100, actually, I'm sorry, 180 square, 180 feet from the edge of the building to the edge of the parking, edge of the property.
Edge of it.
Roughly. So about 180 feet is the distance. And so I guess I have concerns about the noise. I, I'm not convinced right now that there's anything in here that protects the neighbors from the noise. And I'm very concerned about that. I'll just, I'll probably have some questions in a minute, but that's just a comment. Somebody wants to answer that, I would like to have some, someone confirm, if you will, the distance from the building to the property edge. What's the shortest distance? Go ahead.
Well, sir, here's the, here's the site plan that was submitted as, by the applicant as part of the application. And I believe in looking at that, it shows 144 feet between the west, the east edge of the building to the east edge of the, the property line. To the south, it shows 180 feet.
And that's, again, looking at the protest map, that, there's a neighbor right there across that property line that is on the protest map. So there's, there's 10 adjacent properties to the, to the subject property here and seven of those 10 are on the protest petition. So, all right, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty?
Yeah, I would just, as we move this thing forward, I just want to thank everyone for being here today. I think, you know, a lot of opinions were voiced. On a personal level, on one side of the coin, I live on 10 acres with my family and we moved out to that area because it's quiet. We have horses. We want our kids to run around. We enjoy it. And when we look around what's happening in our vicinity, we also have concerns about development that is likely coming. So I hear many of you speak and I can certainly, on a personal level, relate to what you're saying on a personal level. I'm also a small business owner. And in this community, we advocate for the entrepreneur. And we, we want development. We want small business development. We want small business owners to, to grow and expand. And, and I'm familiar with, with Gift and his business and he's a good business owner, a very good business owner, a good young business owner. And we should celebrate business owners in this community. And so I, I hear everyone in the room. And what I'm, my job is to remove all of that subjective emotion. And we've heard reference many times, these golden rules. And that's the objective standard in these conversations. Despite how I can appeal to your thoughts and I appeal to your thoughts, the objective standard is these golden rules. And when we look at this objective standard, remove out all the emotion, when we look at these things, I have some serious reservations based upon the character of the neighborhood, based upon the use, the detrimental effect that we could have on neighbors due to proximity. I have serious reservations due, due to noise. It's not my job to determine the viability of the business model. It's not my job to determine whether this is, this business model will be successful. My job is to look at these rules and this, and this use and how it will impact this community. And I do, I have some serious reservations, not to the business model, to the use in this specific area. So I, I'm going to listen to the remaining comments from my colleagues, but, but I hear everyone in this room and what you're saying. And this is not an easy decision, but I do have some reservations based upon the objective standards that, that I'm supposed to rule on, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Beatty. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I appreciate Commissioner Beatty's comments. He's brand new on the commission, but he has a good grasp of how the zoning takes place. I'm, I'm very pleased to hear that. As I took a look at this case, and you go back and, and review all of the background information and the results from the MAPC meeting and so forth. And then we also get a little pre-briefing from our, our professional staff as we come into this. And one of the things, I had a sheet that all the commissioners have it, that show the golden factors as we're taking a look at this. And this is what we make the decisions on. And I made little checkmarks down on the things that I thought applied to this case. And then I went back and took a look at the, at what the staff put together for their comments. And one of the main things that really wasn't brought out, I don't think very well, is that our professional staff that looks at these things each and every day, they recommended denial of this case. And so then I went back and, and I, as I said, I put checkmarks down through. And then I went back and took a look at what the professional staff said. And the professional staff, actually, I was very pleased to see that their reasons for denial were the same things that I checked when I was going through the golden rules, the character of the neighborhood, the zoning and uses of the properties nearby, the extent with which the removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect the nearby properties, conformance of the requested change to the adopted and recommended master plan. I think that this proposal is, definitely warrants denial. Each one of these things in, in the golden factors, as pointed out by our professional staff, are reasons to deny. And this is not my district. I want to hear what Commissioner Lopez has to say before I make any recommendations. I want to hear what Commissioner Lopez has to say before I make any recommendations on this. But I see all through this, and truly, I, I've worked planning for 16 years now, so I think I understand zoning and planning pretty closely. And this case, I, I was very, very surprised at the recommendations of the Metropolitan Planning Commission. It is not something that I, well, I believe would have happened when I was on the Metropolitan Planning Commission for nine years. So today, because of the vote by the MAPC, it's going to take four votes to overturn the MAPC, but we have 62% of the public that said, this is a bad idea, and I agree with 62% of the public. So it takes four votes there, too. So at this time, I, I would like to hear what Commissioner Lopez has to say, because then her district, and then we can move forward. But I think people understand pretty well what my position is on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Lopez, I, I've got a comment or two, but I'd like to defer and let you comment if you'd like to.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. I guess first, I want to thank everybody for coming today, the applicant, but also everybody that just lives in the area that just wants to express your opinions on, on what you think is best for your neighborhood. I appreciate you taking the time to be there today. As you hear between all of us, this is a hard decision because it is splitting, you know, we're talking about small businesses, like Commissioner Beatty said, and we always do want to be helpful, but at the same time, we also want to make sure that we're following our golden factors, like Commissioner Dennis said. The event space itself sounds like it's a, would be a great model. My concern, my biggest concern is just the small acreage that this is going, being, you know, this would be on, the five acres versus what we have proposed as a 20 acres minimum normally. So Commissioner Howell was stating about the noise, and how can we be certain about noise staying within the area and not, you know, getting out into the neighbors? And, and I just don't know how that's possible. There's been concerns brought up earlier in the conversation about other properties that we have and how hard it is with noise complaints. I have a property in, in, south of here that has an event space and just the hoops that have to be jumped through to combat some of that, and then really not get very far because it, it's just, it's a hard thing to do when it comes to that certain scenario. So at an appropriate time, and Commissioner Meitzner, Chairman Meitzner, you have some input that you'd like to do, but I would like to make a motion based on golden factors 1, 2, 3, and 8. This goes against the, the character of the neighborhood. Again, it's on five acres and not 20, which really concerns me when it comes to the noise aspect of this, and the detrimental impact to the neighboring properties that this could potentially have, as well as the really strong opposition against this by the neighbors. And 60, over 60% is, is a, is a very large margin there. So at the appropriate time, I will make a motion, but I would love to hear what Chairman Meitzner has to say first. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. A quick question to Scott. If, if, if this application is denied, what is the timeframe where the applicant could revamp and try to apply again? Or is there a timeframe?
Yes, sir, there is a time. And per the zoning code, if it's the same application or if it's substantially similar, then it would be 12 months. If there are significant changes made to the application, then it is six months.
Okay.
And it is the planning commission, that if there's a discussion about whether it is significant or not, it will go to the planning commission for determination.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Scott, for clarifying that. My, my comment is a, a lot in line with what Commissioner Beatty had spoke to, and, and again, we've been in some of these zoning cases, again, I've made reference at the city as well, and oftentimes, I get really emotional and somewhat insulting, but I would say that, that you all as a group were very, very respectful with your comments, and you were factual and knowledgeable, a little emotion once in a while, but that's to be understood. But I just want to compliment you all. And, and my only addition to Mr. Beatty's, I mean, Commissioner Beatty's comments is that, that we in, here in Sedgwick County, I say we're blessed, some say we're cursed with the fact that we are a, we are a real center of the economic engine of this whole state. And we make things, some of you have referenced that you've got your own businesses that are located maybe outside this area, and, and it is a, there's many, many counties, there's 105 counties, and I bet 100 of them wish that they had the challenges that, that we have here in Sedgwick County, because people are moving here, and people are liking our quality of life, they're liking our, our traffic that's ease, they like our cost of living, and, and we, and we're a big factor in, in contributing to the, to the betterment of our state. And with that becomes, the cursed part is things like entrepreneurs want to adventure into the various, various venues, could it be, you know, is it a manufacturing plant or a, or a bar or a, or a venue or whatever it is? That comes with our, that comes with our growth. So we're cursed with, with being the center of, of a lot that goes on in, in this county. And that's, again, as, as Commissioner Beatty and we've, we've expressed before, we, we have to take that all, all into consideration on, on the big picture. And the other thing that, that it would be easier for me to, to vote, to, to ask that it maybe gets re-looked at at a future date, if, if this venue or this applicant was not on what I would call a main, major arterial street, meaning hydraulic, in our community. And we've had cases where a major intersection of, of two arterial streets intersect, and there's been homes on three corners, and one corner wants to do something that's, that supports growth and supports changes from residential to a commercial or slightly commercial development. And so that is the reality of life in, in our, in our community. So I've always been supportive of, of growth and, and, and items that, that, especially if they're on arterial streets. That said, I do hear Commissioner Lopez's comment about the size of the property, and I, one of you made a comment about minimum of 20 acres, and, and so it's got some challenges. And, and so I'm hopeful that if this is denied, that, it sounds like the applicant is pretty respectful. I know there's been some comments about maybe some questionable decisions or practices, but my hope is that, that if it is denied, that, that you're not, that the applicant is still willing to work with, now that you've all heard everything from yourselves, you did a great job of pointing out the golden factors, and you hear from us. So if it's denied, I'm, I'm hoping that it, it's not the, the end from my perspective, but, and not to be, not to lose hope and faith in, in the future of, of this. So that's my comments. So with that, I will, I don't see any other lights on at this point or comments, so Commissioner Lopez, it's, it is in your district, and out of respect, we've always, we, we usually defer to the commissioner that's, that, that this item is, is in their district. So with that, Commissioner Lopez, back to you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. And I do hope that, you know, whatever the outcome of this is today, that this is such a, it's a beautiful idea. I love the building, the inspirational pictures, and if this doesn't work in this location, I hope that, that you're able to find one that is better suited to, to what you're trying to do here. So because of the golden factors that I had mentioned earlier, I move the board overrides the recommendations of the MAPC and denies the conditional use.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Just to make sure I heard Commissioner Lopez correctly, because the sound is very, very muffled up here. She did make a motion to deny based on the golden rules. Am I not correct?
That's what I understand, yes.
I concur with that. I'd be happy to second it. I believe, as I stated before, it does not meet the character of the neighborhood or the properties nearby. It does not, the recommendation by the MAPC does not follow the recommendations of our professional staff. I do believe that this is one that I'm going to have to second to, to deny. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. It's like, because this is so unusual, I would like to do an explanation of vote, and I pride myself being a property rights champion, and I think the property rights is always a two-way street, so you have to figure out, you know, if someone can use their property and it doesn't affect other people, they may not like it, may not like the way it looks from, there's, there's aspects that we typically hear that are not compelling arguments, but today, I think we heard some very compelling arguments. And I have to just say, in all my years of being on this commission, this is one of the most unusual cases that I've seen, considering the recommendations of professional staff, the vote of our citizens advisory board, and then the unanimous vote of our MAPC being a complete opposite sides of the, of the case here. So with that in mind, I, I am perplexed as to how that happened. I think we ought to maybe go back and review what went wrong in this case. I, I, I want to just encourage the applicant a little bit. I think you're a good businessman, and I think that you ought to be respected, and we ought to appreciate what you do for this community. And I'm afraid that by, by doing this denial today, if that's where we end up, that it looks, you know, it may feel like we're being hard on you personally, and I don't want that to be the message today. I think the compelling, as, as Commissioner Beatty said earlier, we have to be objective, we have to be, take our emotions out of this. And again, I think our professional staff were spot on. I think Commissioner Dennis is exactly right. Professional staff actually probably did the right thing here. They, they made the, the five recommend, five observations that, that weighed into this, and unfortunately, the case continued to the point that, that's before us today. And I don't know that this, we certainly don't want to have to deny someone at this point in the process, because it's extremely disappointing to, to, to the applicant. So I, all my years here, only a couple times have we denied someone at this point in the process. It's extremely unusual. But I may just encourage you that, I hope you do regroup, find another way to do this, maybe use the property for the photography part of this, I don't think that's the problem. It's just the, it's just things we articulated today, the, the large traffic and the, and the alcohol, and the other things, I think, that have been articulated numerous times today. But it sounds like it's a beautiful property, it's certainly worth a lot of money. Hopefully, you can find a way to benefit your business with this property in a way that is more, more conducive to the neighbors and that type of thing, but, and in terms of event center, if that's something your business needs to do, I hope you'll find a Plan B, because I think this community needs places like that. So I just like to encourage you. I think you're a good man, I think you have a great business, I want to show appreciation to you, but I, I do feel compelled to vote with the motion this morning, and I hope that we can figure out what went wrong in this, in this particular case that brought it to this point. Again, thank you, Chairman, for the chance to speak.
Any other comments? I don't see any, so again, the motion is to deny based on the rules, and, and it would have, it will take four out of five votes to be in favor of, to overrule and be in favor of, of this, of the applicant, if to simplify it. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Doesn't.
It's a aye.
She understand the motion?
The motion is to deny.
To deny.
So she voted aye, which means.
So an aye would be to deny. I just want to make sure, Commissioner Lopez, she's remote, I want to make sure she understands before she votes.
Commissioner Dennis?
Appreciate it, Commissioner, yes, aye.
Okay.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
A, a very reluctant aye, but, and I, so, but I will agree with, with my colleagues. So the motion carries, which means the application is, is denied. So again, incredible, thank you for everybody's respect and professionalism here, and I feel lucky that, fortunately, we have citizens and individuals like yourselves in our community. So with that, before we go to the, we'll let the audience clear, and let's take a few-minute break. So it's 11:25, let's reconvene at 11:35, if that's okay.
Sounds, everybody?
10 minutes. At 11:35, right. Thank you. I feel bad for this guy.
I hope he feels encouraged.
Okay.
Staff has drafted a support letter for that project for commission review and approval, if appropriate. So what you have in front of you is a letter drafted for state legislators and senators as well as the governor's office. So if you could review that, give us comment, we'd be glad to put it on letterhead. How you choose signature is up to you, Chairman, if you want to sign for the commission or if we would like to have all five commissioners sign whatever the will of the board is.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the staff's work on getting this letter together for both legislators and for the governor. As you know, I've been a supporter of this for some time. The chairman's award that I just presented recently was for this vision for the future. It's transformational to this community. It's going to provide a workforce for the future. It's expensive, but it is an investment in our future, and I strongly support it at the appropriate time after other commissioners have had an opportunity to weigh in on it. I would love to make a motion to approve of these two letters.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. We have received, I think each of us, we had received an electronic copy of this earlier or last week even. We have two letters, and the body of the letter is the same. The introductory paragraph, one is addressed, one goes to all the legislators, and the other one goes directly to the governor. I think it'd be appropriate if, and then the body of the, the body of the letter, for those watching, is not very long, but I think it'd be appropriate to read into the record and for the public on transparency that we read the body of what we're sending. Is that, do you agree? And Commissioner Dennis, I know you've been out front on this, so if you'd like to just read into the record.
I'd be happy to read the one from, that are going to Governor Kelly. As you said, there's just a minor change between the two of them. But, dear Governor Kelly-
Wait, hold on. Oh, your mic is not on, sir.
I'm sorry.
Say that again.
Let me start again.
Yeah.
As you said, the bodies are basically the same. I'm going to start out with the one for Governor Kelly. And it says, "Dear Governor Kelly, it is with great optimism that Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners looks forward to working with you and your administration in the year ahead and tackling several life-changing initiatives for South Central Kansas and the entire state. One of our top priorities for the year ahead is support of the proposed Wichita biomedical campus. It is an ambitious but attainable vision shared by leaders at Wichita State University, WSU Tech, and the University of Kansas to create a health sciences and research complex offering nearly a dozen fields of study. This collaboration will not only increase educational and research opportunities for students, it will improve the health of all Kansans and the employment pool for healthcare providers across the region and across the state. As presented, this project fits perfectly with Sedgwick County's movement to enhance public and mental health initiatives in South Central Kansas, including the addition of a new community crisis center as well as potential mental health hospital and community service center. We ask for your support in funding this endeavor initially. The Wichita biomedical campus is expected to have approximately 3,000 students and nearly 200 faculty and staff with a future growth expected. Economic impact analysis projects that this joint campus to support nearly 1,600 jobs with a total annual income of $104 million. The total economic output is estimated to be $177 million excluding construction. Thus, this project not only has the potential of enhancing health of Kansas, but also can serve as an economic driver for our state. Clearly, the impact of the Health Science Center of this magnitude will reach far beyond Sedgwick County. It's an investment in skilled talent fostering, attracting, and retaining healthcare professionals for the industry that is expected to be our state's largest employment sector in the future. We invite you to join Sedgwick County leaders and help us change the landscape of healthcare in Kansas. Your support is crucial to the success of this transformational project." And the only difference really on the legislative, it starts out, now that the 2023 legislative session is in full swing, the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners is eager to work with you on several life-changing initiatives for South Central Kansas and the entire state. We are confident that together we can make dramatic changes that will benefit years to come. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Yes, and thank you. I think it's appropriate that the public gets to hear what our letter is going to be said, and then obviously it'll be read into the minutes, clerks. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, so Commissioner Dennis, you'll make-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. You know that I've been a supporter of this for some time, and I think that, as I've said, and the letter says, this is transformational for our future. I moved it, we approve drafting these letters in the final format and submitting them to both the governor and the legislature.
Okay. And I will second that. And I know you have been very active in this, and I'm looking around the commission. I know that Commissioner Howell has been an active supporter of Wichita State, and I remember the MDL Lab and all your efforts, and myself obviously is a supporter, and I know that Commissioner Lopez has been a, was a big part of securing a $51 million investment in Wichita State, so we're all, and Commissioner Beatty, I'm sure, is, and just need another day or two, rock chalk and all that stuff. So there's a motion and a second, so no other comments. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries, and we'll get this letter off. We need to decide if I just sign it on behalf of the commission or you all want to sign it. I'm okay either way. You guys got a feeling? You all got a feeling? Why don't I just sign it on behalf?
We need to get it out fairly soon. I don't know when we can get Commissioner Lopez's signature on it.
If it's on behalf of the-
I'd be very comfortable with having the chairman sign it out for all of us.
All right, very good. We'll draft it that way.
Okay. You got a comment, Commissioner Lopez, on that, either way?
That works, yep. Whatever is easy, yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we'll do that. So we'll work it up, I'll sign it, and we'll get it out. Okay, that was, that was our off-agenda item. Now we're back on schedule. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Chairman and Commissioner, good morning. Tom Stoltz County Manager's Office recommends approval of consent items M through double letter AB.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve consent items M, as in Mary, through double AB. Any comments, questions? I don't see anything. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Being no comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Tanya Cole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. So we are in our fourth week of the legislative session, so naturally we are seeing more bills being introduced. Right now, our lobbyist has informed us of 24 bills that we're keeping a watch on. Most of those are related to elections, juvenile justice, and local government. It has been a busy week, this week, for several of our commissioners that have been in Topeka this week. We know that Chairman Meitzner was up earlier this week to be present and part of the discussions on Amtrak expansion through South Central Kansas, and I think Commissioner Howell was there and present for that meeting as well. On behalf of Sedgwick County, Commissioner Howell testified on two bills on Monday as a proponent, and that was House Bill 20, excuse me, 2082, which is our county funds bill, and House Bill 2021, which is a bill issues related to juvenile justice and Senate Bill 367. Last evening, just last night, we had commissioners up in Topeka for a reception with our South Central Legislative Delegation, and that provided us an opportunity to speak on our legislative platform and issues and priorities that we see this year for our county, and that was a very well-attended event. And so I know that I'm giving updates, but I sure hope when I finish that, commissioners will be able to expand on some of those events. We do have our County Counselors' Office working on a few items on our platform for bill language, and that is our public works items, making amendments to Statute 681106 and 68521, and so that's our public works resolution requirement and our public works county engineer's estimate for projects. One bill that we did have, or excuse me, one legislative item that we did have on our platform was the capers penalty, and Jason did inform us that there is a bill currently that was introduced, that's House Bill 2195, and I'd just like to go over a section of that bill. So it reads, "Through December 31 of 2024, the county and other capers employees would pay the statutorily prescribed employer contribution rate, which is currently 8.43% through December 31 of 2024, instead of the 30% penalty rate that is currently charged." Also, for after December 31, 2024, so this revision does not have a sunset, the 30% fee would apply for any portion of the salary in excess of $35,000 instead of $25,000, which would result in some reduction of capers penalties in 2025 and beyond. And I think we're supportive of that bill. So looking ahead dates, February 9, that's KAC County Day at the Capitol. February 15, we will have a South Central delegation lunch, luncheon at the Capitol. And so we have canceled our BOCC meeting on February 15, that's a Wednesday, but we have moved our commission meeting to February 22. And then February 25 is turnaround day, and so that's non-exempt bills may be considered, that's when non-exempt bills may be considered in the chamber in which they were introduced. And so I always like to put a plug in for the public. If you want to learn more or understand what's going on, just go to kslawcer.org, and you can also watch and listen to House and Senate hearings at that website. And I'm going to shift gears and talk about our federal platform real quick. We are starting conversations on that. Jim Davenport did send me a draft, and I've also contacted our county staff to send me any updates, revisions, edits, and I've also sent that to our commissioners to get input, and then we'll start discussions here mid-February and hope to finalize that agenda by early March. So I will, that's all my updates, and so I'd like to turn it over to Chairman and Commissioners for anything you'd like to add.
Okay, thank you. A good summary. Commissioner Howell, I know you've been up there, and maybe you're giving us an update.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't want to repeat much of what you said, but I just want to elaborate on a couple points. There's a lot of freshman legislators this year, and I spent two full days in earnest, very intentional, trying to bring up our platform and initiate as many conversations as I possibly could, and I think at least a couple dozen times, I had great conversations with many, many new freshman legislators and some of the more seasoned legislators as well. I think we're getting quite a bit of support. They received our platform very well. They love the format, by the way. That continues to be one of their comments with the business card with the QR, QR code on it. There is a lot of bills in play. I would just say, as one recommendation, I don't know who else besides Jason and possibly Tanya is doing this, but there are so many bills in play right now. I think a thorough review daily to see what's actually along that list of bills is really important, because there are a lot of bills that potentially have impact on local government. And so I'm recognizing that, and I keep hearing about bills, and so I think we're tracking the right ones, but I'm a little concerned that we might miss one or two here and there, so I just think we all ought to be tuned into that. A little more detail on the two bills, actually three bills I testified on. I did testify on Senate Bill 2. I had late testimony, but they did accept that, and consequently, the Chair of Transportation in the Senate, there was enough discussion about the details of my testimony that I think the strategy right now is they plan on working that bill. I think that Senator Fauci Doe did a great job in drafting the bill, but I do believe they're going to make some changes in the Senate Transportation Committee, then they plan on sending that over to Senate Judiciary for additional work, and I believe there's a, I do believe there's a plan. They expect this will get passed out of the, out of that committee, and so there is advancement on this, on the suspended driver's license bill. I'm very excited about that. They did say they want us to testify again in Judiciary when it goes into that committee for another hearing. So this is a little bit unusual to have two hearings on the same bill in the same body, but we will have that chance on Senate Bill 2. I did testify, as you said already, on House Bill 2021 and 2082. Both of those hearings were, I think, very positive. My read on both of them is I think we're going to see positive movement on both of those bills. They will actually help Sedgwick County, our juvenile offenders, as well as our accounting for Lindsay Poirier, our CFO. And I did also attend, just to let you know, attended federal and state affairs, welfare reform, the passenger rail presentation, I did attend that as well. The elections committee, when there's a lot of, there's a lot of bills and elections, and they did talk about ballot boxes. I was surprised how those hearings went, but we're going to get to keep our ballot boxes, I'm pretty sure. We're not going to change that. And then, and two House sessions, and so I was very busy and really had a great time there, and I think our reception last night was well done by everyone involved in planning that. We had another, maybe 10 or 15 legislators show up to that, and we had, again, more conversations, and so overall, I think we're being very effective this year on our legislative strategy. So I'll say thank you for your great work and appreciate, appreciate the chance to give my report.
Okay. And Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, I want to thank Tanya and the staff for helping coordinate the little get-together we had last evening up in Topeka, kind of a nice little reception. Especially, I want to thank Jason and Jessica, our lobbyists, for the work that they put in to make sure that that reception was successful. I know our staff put together these neat little cards, look like business cards, but you can take a snapshot with your camera, and you can see our entire legislative agenda, and those were a big hit. I handed out every one that I had with me, so I need some more, actually, so the next time I meet with them, we'll have some more of those things. But I thought the evening was very successful. We were able to discuss our legislative agenda with a number of our legislators, and we had people like Speaker of the House was there in person, and so we had the right people to listen to what our legislative agenda is. As the evening wound down, I was talking with just a couple of the legislators, and they said, "Hey, we understand you need a regional mental health facility. That's, that's important. We're on board. We understand that you support the biomedical facility. We're on board." But if we had a third thing, what, what would be the next thing that you'd really advocate for? And now, this is personal. It's something that I advocated to put on our legislative agenda, and that is the wait time for people that have intellectual or developmental disabilities in our region. The wait time, the last time I heard, was nine years. That's unacceptable. So the question after I brought that up was, well, what's the cost to fix that? And so I grabbed ahold of our county manager, Tom Stoltz, and he promised that he would gather that information and get that back to the legislature. But they are listening to us. That's the main thing, and that's why we have these little get-togethers, that's why we're going back up on the 15th to talk with them again. And so we need to continue that dialogue back and forth, but I don't know if other commissioners have little hot-button items that they've got, but it's a great opportunity when we're meeting one-on-one to say, this is important to me for the future and to help the people that need it the most, and I think people that have intellectual and developmental disabilities need people like us to advocate for them. So that's why I place that number three before everybody. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I would just comment that it's, it's fun to watch that each of us have our own strengths in, in our own personal relationships. Commissioner Beatty and I were able to attend last week the KAC Association of County all-day event. I know that we had, all four of us, intended, but there were some traffic things and other, other distractions that kept you here. But I think Commissioner Beatty got to see, and, and I was re-reminded of the, of the value when, when each of us have a personal relationship with either a department or a, or an elected official, and it goes a long way of helping us. So thank you for, Commissioner Beatty, for joining me that day, and, and Commissioner Howell mentioned the Heartland Flyer extension, and I think if we can, the best way to describe, we've made some tremendous progress, as Jim got to witness, and kind of a teamwork between FRA, Federal Administration, Amtrak, and BNSF is supportive, Texas, Oklahoma. It's kind of coming together nicely, and I think for, it does attract some public interest. And so if we, we do have a link to that 45-minute hearing, it's got some valuable stuff in it presented by others. I think if we ought to make sure that that, that link is accessible on our, on our website with maybe a brief message. It's, it's not Sedgwick County-driven, but it is incredible. It's, and that way we can refer to it, because if you're like me, you get, you get questioned about that a lot, and we can refer that, to that. So that would be my, and I think we're, we're good with that. Commissioner Beatty, you have anything to add, or? No? Okay. Commissioner Lopez, have anything, questions?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you again, Tanya, and thank you to Jason. We have a, we have a lobbyist up in there that really knows how to navigate and direct us in the appropriate way, so Jason's not watching, but he's, he's a valuable asset for us, from my perspective. Okay, and that's not even a receive and file. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Committee reports. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you very much. Now, everybody knows that I am a strong Air Force supporter.
You are?
However, that said, I also was very honored, the fact that I got to serve on the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee. And believe it or not, that committee hasn't gone away yet. We just had a meeting the other night about the Commissioning Committee, and I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on what's happening. There is a thing called Navy League, and again, I'm Air Force, so I don't understand all this stuff, but they, they did not have a Navy League organization here in Wichita in the past, and it's a 501(c)(3) organization once it's created, and they're working through the process of becoming a 501(c)(3). And what the intention of the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee, again, that I serve on, is to look at the Navy League and transfer the operations of what we've been doing as the Commissioning Committee over to the Navy League. So what does that mean? Right now, we've got a little over $1,000 in the bank to be able to do day-to-day operations in support of the USS Wichita. But beyond that, we also established, as we were getting through the commissioning process, a trust fund, and it's run by the Trust Company of Kansas here in Wichita. And we ask businesses and individuals if they'd like to donate to this trust, and we could do a couple things. One thing that the Commissioning Committee did is they worked with WSU, and WSU will give in-state tuition to any member that's serving on the USS Wichita, no matter where they're at. If they want to take a remote class or any way that they can go to WSU, they can take classes with in-state tuition. But the funding that we collected as we were going through the commissioning process, which the trust company started out the year, and this was a bad year for the, for the stock market, but we started the year with about $100,000 in this trust. Now it's $117,000. I need them to start doing my investments, because they're much better than anything that I've ever had, at least during the last year. So we're trying to figure out what we're going to do with over $100,000 plus the checking account. So I think the way forward, we didn't have a quorum that night, so we couldn't vote on it, but as, as the Navy League becomes a 501(c)(3) here in Wichita, they're the best people to move this forward in the future, and we can disband the Commissioning Committee that I serve on currently. So if you hear something at all about the USS Wichita moving forward with, under the Navy League, that's really a good thing, I think, so I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that. The other thing about the Navy is each of the different services have a band that travels around the United States and does different events. You might have read that McConnell Air Force Base is bringing in the Blue Angels next year for their, their air show, but there's also bands that travel around to do the same thing that things like the Blue Aces do. So on May the 6th, the Navy Band is going to be in Wichita, Kansas, at Central Christian Church, and it's a free concert. For anybody that's interested in attending that, it's a great way to hear some fantastic music, because they are a very professional outfit, and I just wanted to get that out, and as it comes closer, I'll give more details as I learn them on how that you can go to this free concert. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you for the update. Any other committee updates as of today? Okay, I don't see anything, so next up, next item, please.
Other.
Anybody have anything under other? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. My comments kind of between committee updates and others, so I'll just use this opportunity to speak. Commissioner Lopez and myself actually both serve on the Wichita Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to mention that eight days ago, it was a Tuesday on January 24th, we had a really large event here in the Wichita area, and it was entitled 20 Years of Service Renewed. And the Hispanic Chamber, for a number of years, I think really through the COVID, the COVID years really did a lot of damage to the organization, but they are, they are back on their feet, and they are beginning to thrive. I just wanted to recommend, if anybody's out there, Hispanic business owners are very, very important to this community, and we have an example in, in Kansas City. There were the Black Chamber and the Hispanic Chamber worked together, and they actually have their own building. And the keynote speaker did a very good job of encouraging people how to be successful in our business world here. I just want to say, and they're also partnered up here in Wichita with the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce, so there's, there's another connection there. So the business world, I think, recognizes the importance of the Hispanic Chamber and the Hispanic businesses of our community. I'm glad to be on that board. I just wanted to say that if anybody out there wants to be a member of that, check it out. They will, you don't have to be Hispanic to be a member, but just be supportive of businesses and minority-owned businesses at that. So I am, I'm proud to be on that board. It's just, my, my intention is to be a conduit between government and business, and I think anytime I can do that to help businesses navigate government and red tape, that's my, that's why I'm there. So glad to be a part of that. Just wanted to thank them for their putting that together, and I think that it's exciting for this community to see the WHCC, Wichita Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, get back on its feet and beginning to thrive once again. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Lopez, you're part of that. I don't know if you have any comments or any, any updates on your end?
No, I appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner Howell, for bringing that up. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make that event, but I saw the pictures, and there was an incredible turnout, and, you know, we were hoping that that would be the case, so to see it happen was just really amazing, and looking forward to the next, the next event, and then doing everything that we can to help, you know, our Hispanic entrepreneurs and getting our businesses, especially our small businesses, that a little bit help that that they could need there, and just really happy that the event went so well. So thank you again, Commissioner Howell, for bringing that up.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, I don't see anything else. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Executive session.
Yeah, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Chairman Meitzner. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 45 minutes until 12:55, for the preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing potential purchase of land and buildings for the use by county departments. And that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 12:55.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments, being none? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
We will, yes, we will convene on the sixth floor, so Commissioner Lopez, we will join you on the sixth floor.
Yeah. I got some other bill ideas I shared with people up there.
Yeah.
It's very interesting.
[inaudible]
I got some other bill ideas I shared with people up there.
Yeah.
It's very interesting.
Apologies for being a few minutes late. We've returned from executive session, no action taken. And so we're back. And is there any other business that comes before the board today? I don't see any, so thank you for tuning in and we'll adjourn. See you next week.